All right, I'd like to call this meeting to order, verify compliance, build the meetings law, and then adopt the agenda. Can all stand for the pledge? Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under each other, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. So, um, let's do something different tonight. Tribute to nine eleven. I'd like to read a poem that was written by Alan Jankowski called "We Shall Never Forget." Let the world always remember the fruitful day of September. The ones who answered the duty's call should be remembered by us all. Who left the comfort of their home to face perils as yet unknown, an embodiment of goodness on a day when men's hearts have gone to shreds. Sons and daughters of being you who never questioned what they had to do by example were a source of hope and should not cope. Those that would not turn their back with determination that would not crack, who bound together in their ranks and asking not a word of thanks. Men who bravely gave their lives, whose orphaned kids and widowed wives can probably look back on their dad who gave the country all they had. Actions taken without regrets, heroism shall never forget. The ones who paid the ultimate price, let's never forget their sacrifice. And never forget the ones no longer here and far from the freedoms we all hold dear. We may have never, never waited unless their sacrifices mean anything. So thank you all those that continue to serve us and obviously our thoughts and prayers are with those who lost members there or the souls of those that did pass away in that day, so. Three is comments on the audience regarding agenda items. Anyone in the audience to take? So, we'll move on to item number four, student and staff spotlight. Tonight our principals and principals' thoughts on the start of the school year. So, uh, Hills Corners is listed as one, so Laurie, you're up.
Hello, everyone. Um, it's been a great start, it's been a great start to the s- sorry. Do that. Now it's been a great start to the school year. Um, been able to visit every classroom and our lunchroom each day. As of today, six hundred and forty-seven students, K-four through fifth grade. Um, last Friday, we had our PBIS kickoff, which you might have read about in, um, The Connect. Um, this year, every year we have a song that our music teacher teaches the students and then we, um, do our own choreography to it and it's quite a, it's quite a, it's interesting to see all of us dancing in the gym and this year the song is "Try Everything" and it really is that message of, you know, it's okay to fail, it's, it's, you're gonna give it a try and if you can't, we're gonna pick you up and we're gonna figure out, um, what you need to do next. So, it's a great theme and it's a great message for our kids and, um, it was a really fun kickoff and, um, I would say also that field trips are already underway. We had some students visit our Hills Corners library, so, um, and get their library cards as first graders that didn't have theirs already. So, we're making sure that we've got a focus on learning as well, um, beyond the school day and using a great resource of our Hills Corners library.
Thank you, Laurie. Next will be Chris with Edgerton.
Hello. Welcome to the start of a new year. Um, I would concur with Laurie one hundred percent. I always love the start of a new year, especially at the elementary level. If you can see the first days through the eyes of K-four families, um, our parking lot is absolutely jam-packed. I don't think you can find a parking spot for miles. Um, so, uh, it was wonderful, wonderful start. All hands are on deck those first few days, especially, uh, making sure that those important routines are in place for our kids. Um, just like Laurie said, we started our PBIS kickoff, uh, last week. This year, this is our second year at Edgerton with PBIS and we are, uh, fully implementing, uh, all phases of PBIS this year. Um, so that started off really, really well. We played a game of Family Feud with the kids and they really enjoyed that. Um, our PTO had a back-to-school picnic on Friday. It was very well-attended, uh, food and games and just an opportunity for staff and, and students and families to enjoy that first week back. And just like, um, Laurie said, we're off and having some field trips as well. Last week, Friday, our third grade went down to Indian Summer and there was new learning for our third graders, learning about, uh, new cul- uh, learning about, uh, the culture of, out of our Native American tribes. So, um, off to a great start this year.
Thank you, Chris. Next will be Laura from the middle school.
Hi. It's been a very exciting start to our school year. We've been working hard to be really unified in our approach to everything that we're doing and so our, we have a theme this year and it's called "Love Your People" and we're using it with staff and with students and it's been very positively received and so the kids have been pretty amazing. I have to say, we had some warnings maybe about certain groups of students that had been challenging in the past and we're using this theme to really think about, how are you loving your people and how is your, what you're doing showing us that you're loving us? And they get it, they're thinking about it and we're really having great conversations and the behaviors have turned around already, so we're very excited. And PBIS has been kicked off in a very strong way with our flight plans the first couple days, so everyone's on the same page and we all know our expectations and we're gonna continue to share the message with parents so they can reinforce that at home.
Thank you. And finally.
Good evening. So, at the high school, we've, we've had a lot going on. Um, we started off our year with the eclipse and had our science club participate with a, a very fun barbecue banquet time for, uh, the, the science club and students to come and see the eclipse, so the, the students really enjoyed that. Um, our sports seasons are underway and doing very well. Um, all of our sports teams are doing phenomenally well this year. Our football team's doing well, swim, volleyball, each, each school is, each, uh, sport's doing very, very well. Uh, seminar classes have started this year. The feedback we're getting from students so far is that it's very positive, they're enjoying those courses, uh, particularly the superhero class. I get a lot of feedback that's a class they're enjoying right now. Um, this morning, we had our, our first parent meeting, uh, muffins with mom and donuts with dad and so, uh, pretty good turnout for that and had a nice conversation with fam- families today and, uh, learned some feedback about our parking lot and other things like that that we're still working to address. Um, and then for your knowledge, homecoming is gonna begin on the nineteenth that week. We've got pajama day, class color day, America day, uh, and then on Friday is when we're having our all-school pep rally, the parade, the football game, and on Saturday is the dance, the theme this year is "A Night in New Orleans."
Thank you. And thank you all for that great start of the year. Uh, I wish, yeah, go ahead.
Did any of you get any feedback about starting on Friday?
Uh, I guess, I, I'm getting some mixed feedback.
I, I've gotten some mixed feedback, some, some students, uh, didn't quite understand why they would need to come. Granted, those were a lot of the upperclassmen who were here for a half-day on the Friday afternoon, uh, but I, I got a lot of feedback from parents of ninth graders particularly that their, their kids felt, um, prepared for school because of that morning, having the opportunity to, to really walk through the school day and get to be familiar with their locker and, um, their classes before the rest of the students showed up.
I've received a lot of feedback, uh, from home about starting on Friday. Chris?
It, it actually went better than I thought it was gonna go. Um, it did feel a little bit like two first days, but I loved the first day of school, so, um, it was fine. Uh, family seemed really happy just to have, um, either to be seen their kids go off to school in some cases, um, but otherwise, you know, that first day is special no matter what, so I, I, I didn't hear any negative feedback and I thought attendance was actually better than I thought it was gonna be.
I would agree. I mean, we heard a little complaining, but, um, very little and I think that once everybody was in, they were just happy to be there and, you know, all the new supplies and new teachers and new faces, it, it got underway just fine.
Yeah, the one feedback I got was that, um, he has, he has three children at, at Edgerton and it was a really nice way to just ease into it and he said his kids were raring to go by Tuesday and, and it was a great way to kinda ease into it, so, so beautiful.
And as a parent of a sixth grader, um, he loved the fact that they just got to go through the day without any seventh and eighth graders there, 'cause they had the whole day. So, he, he actually enjoyed that, to get to go from class to class and get a feel for it and he's like, it was completely different on Tuesday, but he said, uh, it was good to at least have gone through the motions, see where the classes are, just get a feel for getting to his locker and getting in and out of his locker, so, it was good. Okay. So, item five is reports. No committee reports for five A tonight. Uh, five B is a superintendent report.
Um, so in the packet, you can see that, um, there are, there are goals there and the first four pages and the goals sort of look at last year's goals, if you remember that and we, uh, I went through those monthly, but this is sort of, uh, looking back at all of them. Each of the goals, a summary of the things that were accomplished, um, and then implications for each of those goals, things that either didn't get accomplished or that we learned about going through that process, um, in terms of putting together our seventeen, eighteen goals. And so, the first four pages basically take the district goals from last year. So, starting on page five is where the seventeen, eighteen district goals will start. And, um, a little bit different format, I mean, some of the same things as last year with some indicators of success, specifically putting, um, people responsible and then some tentative timelines, those will obviously, things might get done earlier or we might need to adjust them based on some other circumstances. Um, you'll see the, the goals that are highlighted in gray were the ones that the boards had specifically, um, given to me as superintendent. I thought it was important to see those in the context of all the goals and how they fit in under those four pillars that the district had been using in terms of, um, areas to, to sort of group those together. So, I think, um, we had talked about right now, um, still understanding our data and so, um, at the back-to-school August launch, um, I sort of took, talked to the, the staff about that redefining ready scorecard that we've looked at here for a couple times and how we're not at a place where we know our data well enough to know what we need to improve on. So, you won't see a goal that says, "Improve ACT by point eight points." We're just not there yet because we haven't said that, we don't know if that's a priority. We haven't looked at our data to know whether that's a priority. We looked at the college career readiness things, what is a priority? So, you will notice that through the goals this year is to analyze our data and to set benchmarks, baselines for a lot of that data. So, you will see, um, metrics developed next year. We're just not at a point, I mean, I could randomly say we're gonna take this and improve our ACT or have so many more kids participate in co-curriculars, but that wouldn't be a collective vision, that would be just something that either I or administrators put together. So, you will see that the goals are set up for our staff and the board to get engaged of looking at those metrics and deciding what are our priorities as a community that we want to look at that. Um, we just received our ACT scores, again, it's from the class of twenty seventeen. So, for the most of them, they took their ACT when they were juniors, so it isn't a surprise, so it would have been, the juniors that just took it is the one that we're looking at and that's the one that will come out shortly, but the class, remember ACT has two, two grades now that we're looking at, the, the seniors who really, two years ago is when you saw their scores and then our juniors that just took it in the spring, which is the most impactful one last school year, we're focused on the juniors. So, we're gonna look at that data, we'll bring it forward. We also have our, um, forward exam from our elementary schools and we are starting, um, our STAR testing, which is our MAP testing at our elementaries and we're going through grade ten this year to start to get some baseline data for academic achievement. We haven't gone into our high school with formative data up until this year. So, we're collecting as much achievement data to really figure out where that is, but I think we've had some conversations about, it's not just about a test score, there are other values and things that we wanna look at and so we have to decide what that is as we walk through some of those things and redefining ready. So, I think a lot of the staff understood that and appreciated that. I think, um, if you remember back to last June fifteenth when we said, "What is the one thing that we're known for?" People struggled a little bit about defining what that one thing was. Um, and I think that's part of our goal and vision to figure out what it is. I mean, I think you could talk about some districts who have that one, you know, if it's a, if they go after the college readiness. I even asked, um, right off the bat, our staff, "How many students go on to post-secondary education?" And I think one of our counselors can answer that question, that's an answer that all of us should have if we know what our goal is. And so, we've got some work to do in that, in that realm, um, and so, that's what this year's looked like. So, the goals will sort of follow that in those areas. So, I'll just quickly talk through them, I'm not gonna read all of them to you, but under student achievement and readiness, I think one of the things that we've, uh, we know that we need to do, both by board policy and because we're behind in it, is we need to do a curriculum audit across the board. Right now, um, to have, um, curriculum that's readily accessible, if somebody came in and said, "Let me see your third-grade science curriculum, exactly what are we teaching on a daily basis?" It's not necessarily exactly in the same place, um, and we need to make sure that what we're doing is consistent across the board. So, we're doing what we call a curriculum audit across the board to make sure that for every grade level and every subject, that we are well-aligned to what we should be teaching and then be able to tell where some gaps are and where, where students are, because all of those things in terms of what assessments we're giving to determine benchmarks for that, we just need to clean that up a little bit. So, what you see is something there called a curriculum audit, um, and then how does that work in with our personalizing learning? The second goal that you will see there has to do with, um, academic levels, remediate achievement and learning gaps. I think in July, we talked about the RTI process and areas of the continuum, both for our gifted learners and students who are struggling. And so, in order for us to look at our curriculum, we need to be able to determine where the achievement gaps are and, and, uh, you heard a presentation last spring on EduClima to be able to have a little bit more data to identify all of the continuum of learners right now. And so, that's part of our goal, to have a plan so our student, our teachers get much more comfortable in identifying where the learner is on the continuum in terms of, of, accelerating it, not just saying, "I'm gonna hold you here until the rest of the class catches up," or, or whatever that might be. So, the second item has to do with having high academic, um, standards, but yes, but also identifying any learning achievement gaps that we might have in the district. The third one is one that the board had talked about in terms of, um, career readiness. And so, we've talked about adding a CT coordinator and then starting to really manage our work-based learning opportunities for our students with the academic and career plans that are being required and our business partnerships with that, and so that falls into the student readiness in terms of the redefining ready report card to make sure that we can say that all of our students are career-ready regardless of what their immediate plans are after high school. So, we're gonna start to look at that and that's, um, you can see that it's assigned there as far as what does that look like for every student? Underneath communications, we've, um, added a couple things under our, um, continue with some of the communications that we started last year. Um, our Whitno window, which was called the viewpoint before, um, our, our newsletter, um, will be getting, will be coming out quarterly, we're just getting ready to get one sent to the printer right now. Our website redesign and then also, we heard from both our staff and parents last year when we did the survey of finding a way of, um, recognizing and celebrating all the good things that are going on in the district and finding a, a much easier platform than just social media. So, I think those are the things we're gonna highlight in addition to all of the other communication that we've started. Um, the second piece of it is related specifically to the, um, referendum plan, um, and so that relates to some of the, um, communication pieces that, that you will see under the indicators of success, um, making sure that we have strong partnerships with some of our stakeholders in terms of that and sort of the, um, referendum request and target communication areas there. So, we put that under communication because that requires a specific targeted, um, strategy different than normal communication. So, if the district were not thinking of referendum, that obviously would not be a strategy in that specific year. So, listed that out as a specific strategy, not isolated, that's the only thing we're concentrating on, but it is a, a unique strategy that, that you wouldn't find if the district were not considering, "I'm going to referendum." Under the goals six and seven, um, all right, clicked off on that too. Have to do with fiscal planning, both the financial plan, um, if we soon get a state budget, um, deciding what that looks like. And then also integrating, continuing to integrate some of our business operational technology plans there. Um, I've listed some of the indicators of success there. Under the financial plan, continue to look at our facility study, what can handle under a regular operating budget, what's gonna move forward to a referendum, how do we prioritize those, that's an ongoing piece when we look at our financial strategy. And then, I'm looking at our health insurance, I think, um, we're gonna hear a little bit about that, but really start to dig into that to look at where are we doing, what are the trends, what is the actuarial data saying from our insurance and starting to look at that from a financial management planning. The integration of some of our systems is still a priority for us, um, both for efficiency and effectiveness. There's a lot of systems that can be integrated and you'll see some of those listed there in terms of, how do we measure that? So, we have some different, you probably have heard these words before, some of our systems, Skyward or Infinite Campus, EduClima, and they all have different chunks of data. How do we not have duplication of data? How can they share data? How can that be a much more, um, electronic process instead of manual like some of those processes still are? Some of them have to do with human resources there. Um, we just finished up our online registration process for the school year and so we wanna review that with our parents, what worked, what did not work, what do we need to change for next year, what did you like about it, customer service, um, and those types of things. Um, getting all of our job descriptions online and then making sure that we have a support staff compensation model that sort of mirrors our educators that we put together last year, so that you'll find there. The last two goals are under district culture and climate and so some of the, um, pieces refer to our talent mo- management framework. Last year, we introduced that, but really focused on the compensation part of that, but there is a lot of other in terms of retention, in terms of onboarding, there's a lot of pieces under HR that we need to work through and that's for all employee groups, but we're gonna continue to work through that model, um, having manuals in place, a lot of onboarding, I think is a high priority with us this year. Um, so when staff come, they feel like they're getting everything that they need right from the get-go instead of having to wait till they've been, you know, hired for a couple weeks and getting some information, whatever that is, if it's a login or, you know, a form that they might need. Um, and then the last one was sort of one that the board had mentioned and I think it's one that's probably not unique to our school district or any organization in measuring climate and culture and always trying to find that. So, there's some good information about that and, and really, when you look at climate culture, it talks about staff engagement, those things go hand-in-hand. Um, it's not something that one person creates, it's a collective sort of attitude about, "What am I contributing to it and do I feel like I can contribute to it?" So, um, we'll start to look at that and the goal is by the end of the school year to have some benchmark data and a process that we can use annually to measure that and see where, where our growth is and determine what it is that we wanna measure that, that's important to people and that they feel like they can contribute to or, or have, have some input into that process. So, those goals, you'll see some of those were some continuation of items that started last year. Some of, some of them are a little bit new, um, but all of them will provide us at the end of this school year what I would call metrics or benchmarks of data that when we move forward, we'll be able to have a lot more, some data that's associated with some of those and we can decide how much do we wanna grow or improve or reduce. Right now, we're just not at a place that has a lot of systems or structures or frameworks in place to just throw numbers out, 'cause I could throw numbers out, but I don't think that they're meaningful. We're just not quite there yet as a system, so.
Thank you. Um, so, the second part is facilities planning and draft survey review and our ready for school perception, so we're gonna bypass that for now, move on to the strategic planning and visioning report.
The next pages in the packet are just a summary of what we wanna make available as we move forward into the, the, um, facilities planning. We captured basically, I think the board had been getting updates all of last year and was pretty comprehensive, lots of presentations, lots of meetings, lots of focus groups. So, this seven-page document just summarizes for the average citizen some of the things that we did last year to sort of create a vision for learning. So, it's a summary document, we will still have all the presentations that were done last year surrounding this, the focus groups, if people wanna go see all those, we will put them on our website and planning of it, but most people will wanna say, "Well, what planning did you do? How do you engage the community last year?" So, they're just little snippets, paragraphs, pictures, very visual, that talk about the work summarizes sixteen, seventeen that we did around creating a vision for learning. So, um, we're not planning, we will reference it in our newsletter and in the survey. We don't plan on hard copy printing that and mailing it because we're doing the Whitno window, that's gonna be mailed, but we'll reference that and it'll be on our website in terms of that document. So, it's just a summary document that sort of captures all of the things we did last year with that as we move forward really to, um, talk about the facilities planning and how does planning for learning link to planning for facilities, so.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, so then we'll move on to six discussion items, the Act thirty-two resolution.
Uh, so, what I wanna get out of this conversation is really one of, is a, a direction for the twenty-fifth or twenty-sixth, uh, uh, for our meeting, twenty-fifth. Thank you. Um, and so, that's why the resolution that, that is forward here is, is a little broad, but, uh, the detailed memo I hope gave you some background information as to kind of where we stand right now and what, uh, some of our options are for our upcoming levy in, uh, in October. So, where we currently stand is back in, in May, um, made the decision to, to use Act thirty-two, uh, for, uh, six hundred thousand dollars, some of that being from projects that we just delayed to July one and then others such as the domestic hot water heaters and adding more lighting, more LED lighting, uh, to the high school. And the idea here was that using this would, uh, provide us with stability in the mill rate given some variables. Those variables hinged on a few different things, if you recall from the memo, they hinged on, um, student membership counts, which are coming at the end of this month, they hinged on property values being up one and a half percent, uh, they hinged on, um, finishing with a balanced budget amongst, amongst a few other variables. And so, two of those variables, depending on how you look at it, were not very favorable. Uh, property values in our district went up point four eight percent while the statewide average was four percent. Um, and so, what that does is, uh, you're not able to spread dollars out as much across your district and so the mill rate rises because of that. Second, with having a huge swing in our health insurance and, and really swinging us in, in essence, to dipping into fund balance to cover, um, that swing, we spent more than what we, uh, thought that we would be spending for sixteen, seventeen and so what that does is that dropped our state aid estimates, um, significantly. And so, we tried to do some things, um, to re-categorize to make that drop less, but nonetheless, state aid is, is going to drop more than what we had assumed back in May when we first were going through this, this exercise. And so, with that, right now where we stand is if we continue to, um, we, we have the six hundred thousand dollars and we can levy for that. Currently, what that does is that brings our mill rate estimate still, membership has to come in in, in late September, to ten dollars and fourteen cents. And so, what that means is in the last board packet, if we look back to it on the twenty-eighth of, of August, I laid out kind of what dollar amounts that means for each of the municipalities on a yearly basis. Um, Franklin, it would hit the most, it's our smallest portion of our tax base, but it hit them the most because their values went up four percent. The city of Greenfield went down, negative point four percent, so their tax increase is actually the least. And then in the bill, or here in the city of, uh, or Village Hills Corners, uh, property values went up, like, point two percent, something like that. So, um, very small increases in property value. And so, right now with a ten dollar and fourteen cent estimate, the question really is, do we wanna dip into fund balance and into Fund Forty-One, right, to cover some of that Act thirty-two work or do we just leave it at the six hundred thousand dollars and we kinda see where things fall, uh, in, in October? So, it's a matter of really kinda deciding between an increase in the mill rate or maintaining, um, a Fund Forty-One, fund balance, um, moving, moving forward for that rainy day as we've talked about. So, not the nicest position to be in, um, you can look at it a couple, one of two ways, though. In the last two years, this district has done two hu- almost two million dollars worth of work in talking with, with gray architects as we're going through referendums and figuring out dollars to cross out some of those projects was nice. Uh, when you're only covering twenty or thirty percent of the high school with LED lighting versus a hundred percent, uh, that's significant dollars when you're able to cross off domestic hot water heaters and doing some, some of those things that you're crossing out of potential referendum items, uh, that, that's nice to be able to do. So, over the course of two years, to see your mill rate only rise twenty cents and yet take on two million dollars of work and kinda knock that out, that's hard to complain about, um, I, I would think. And you'd see that on the back end with less dollars in, in a referendum. So, um, at the same time, it, it was an idea that we could maintain stability in the mill rate and, um, if property values would not have been at point four eight percent, which we found out in mid-August, it would have been a little different story, but you've got the dollar amounts from August twen- But you've got the dollar amounts from August 28th of what right now a current mill rate would look like. You're talking $20 and $30 on $100,000 of property. And so it's the idea of how much do we want to dip into Fund 41 at this point, if at all, to mitigate some of the mill rate increase.
So I guess I don't remember, but was our mill rate for sixteen, seventeen, nine, ninety-four?
Correct.
Okay. So, and, I mean, to me, the question makes sense. Was this information in the public packet?
The...
The memo that you sent us?
The memo was not available publicly at all.
Okay. I just wondered.
So we can get any number of information out as to kind of what we see going on and it'll certainly be at the annual meeting.
Okay.
I just knew that it was a two-pager and I thought let's just get it out that way.
Okay.
But it'll be, a lot of it will be at the annual meeting.
My only concern is I spent a lot of years on that side of the desk and my only concern is we talk about stuff that's in front of us that they don't have.
Yeah.
And, you know, we're supposed to, well, we want interest in what we're doing and we're supposed to be getting, you know, feedback from the constituents as to what they think of stuff. So it'd just be nice if they had some of the same information.
Okay.
But I appreciate what you're asking because, you know, the idea was that we would be able to cover this $600,000 just and keep the mill rate the same based on projected state stuff and everything else. And you're saying that didn't work out and so you're just trying to be above board on it rather than appear like we're doing a bait and switch, you know, on the one hand. We promise you the mill rate won't go up, but we'll get the $600,000 worth of stuff done and now we're talking about raising the mill rate so we can pay for it. And I understand that the variables that you're trying to best guess on just seem crazy to me. So, I mean, I don't know how, I'm glad it's your job now. But I appreciate you bringing this forward in this fashion. I just would encourage you if we can somehow get the information out there, buddy. What did our Fund 41, what was the balance on that, say, two or three years ago? Do you know?
Eight ninety-seven.
Okay. So it's already gone down $232,000.
It'll be at, it's at 615 right now.
And, right, so right now, if we stick to the original resolution and we pass it all on to the mill rate instead of tapping Fund 41 for it, it'll be 565.
Correct.
Which is 200, 332 or 200, whatever I said, 332,000 or something like that. That's, that's, we're just bleeding that thing dry. Yeah, I'm very concerned about that. I mean, obviously the purpose of having money in the bank account isn't to have money in the bank account, but it's to be able to handle what we need to.
So...
I'm not a fan of raising taxes, but I understand this is, this is a tough one, you know?
It is a tough one, John. I think, you know, we made a strategic call to draw down Fund 41 in sixteen, seventeen with the idea that going to referendum and showing a large decrease in our general fund balance would have been a dangerous thing to do and quite frankly to save state aid dollars, which ultimately keeps the mill rate lower than it should be as well. So it was strategic and it was in consultation with a couple of different people, including Robert W. Baird and others. So at the same time, that fund is there for these specific projects, for projects that we're currently doing right now. It's nothing that, it's for buildings and grounds maintenance work, which this district is accomplishing. And it's there for no other purpose. It can't be there for, to use anywhere else. And so, you know, part of it is this district has set up a fund that is, that is strong and that can be used in these situations that we currently are in the midst of. And it can be a story that drives to part of, you know, a referendum, hey, we're planning and we have set aside a million dollars and we're dipping into that too and there's a story behind this. So it is, it is a tough one. I don't, I don't disagree. It's really what, and you being in the community and being in the public, you may have a better sense of me of what is palatable. To give you a sense, in the last four or five years, we've gone from a 1002 to a 1013 to a 1047, back to 10, 1013, 994. So we've all been in this range. We're not, we're not, the range is not going to be a 1014, is not beyond what's been seen here in this district. Just some historical perspective there, yeah.
Do you have just more numbers of what potential tax increase would be if we increase the mill rate to accomplish this, what would be in the 102,000 dollars?
Yeah. So in the, in the last board packet, I have laid those out with home values. So it's different for each of the three municipalities. On a $100,000 home in Franklin, it's going to be a $61 increase. In the city of Greenfield, for every $100,000, it's $16. And in the village of Hales Corners, it's $22 for the year on $100,000. So 16, 22, and then Franklin's hit the most because of their large increase in property valuation.
Did you say Franklin's was?
61 on $100,000 with their 4.1 percent increase in property values.
So we're talking about that amount to give us some more flexibility, keep the balance of Fund 41.
Correct, correct.
Any other thoughts or questions?
Yeah, you know, I've been on the board for five, one and six years and when I got on the board, it was at 1.2 million, Fund 41. And I really, you know, we, we had, we had pride in that. But we weren't using it. And I really, I really believe that things got overlooked and pushed aside and not done and because we, we took pride in that. At least the finance committee, I was always tied going to that it was, you know, a pride. And I think some things are just coming to roost.
Excellent.
I, I don't feel comfortable spending down, however, it is there for a reason and we're using it for a good reason. I again don't want to raise taxes, however, I think the best scenario is, and is to raise it to 1014, minimize the lesser dollars from the state or from where we're getting from and minimize the hit to the Fund 41. We've used it to our advantage, there's no doubt. And so that's my, my take on it. One thing to Jaren, yes, be open about everything we do. However, we are elected to do the business for the people.
I completely agree with you there, but it's hard for us to get feedback from our constituents if they don't, they don't have the information that we're working with. I'm not saying we each need to go out and take a poll or anything like that, but if somebody felt strongly about something, they, they're going to say something to us. But if they don't even have the stuff, and I would want to hear it, but if they, because they're not voting for me, I'm supposed to be voting for, you know, my constituents, but, I mean, if they don't have the information, they can't possibly form an opinion and decide whether to share it or not. I agree about the, I mean, it's nice to hear you say that the Fund 41, this is what it's there for. Quinn, I didn't remember that it was 1.2, but I knew it was close to a million dollars. So thanks for that. I do get concerned about spending things down to the point where we can't handle the next time the staff area floods or something like that, you know, and we gotta go in there with more work or something. On the other hand, I do get concerned about, you know, if we raise it to 1014, then where do we go next when things don't, don't turn out in our favor? I see the sheet you're talking about here from the last packet. Thanks, Mike. I, I'm in favor of not raising it if we don't have to, but life's a balance. I've been saying that for years. Maybe what we need to do is spend some Fund 41 and raise a little bit. I don't know, but that's a middle-of-the-road solution. I know it's not trying to be wishy-washy, but it's trying to balance it out between using it for what it's there for, you know, the same token, making sure something's there for, for the next rainy day that we flood or something.
One other variable that's still out there is, as I said, our student membership counts. And we certainly have a higher head count right now than we did last year at this time. We don't know if that's open enrollment or resident yet. And so if I have residents going up, the resident count going up in the next revenue limit formula to, it was at 2074, I have it right now at 2090, so an increase of 16. The head count right now has increased by 42 students from last September. So if we would get something above 2093, that would start to tick that mill rate up just a little bit as well. We're not talking anything significant, but it would be pennies. And so hopefully by the 25th, even from that third Friday week, I can nail down kind of a, even a closer estimate of what that membership is and we could even bring something that says, okay, is it 1010, is it 1012? What's the, what's the magical number and what would that mean for Fund 41 fund balance? Does anybody else have any take on this topic?
I guess my question would be, is that I think that we need to think about if we don't use any money from Fund 41 and we pass that along to the taxpayers, is that going to negatively impact our chances of having a referendum pass?
So, here's, yeah, yes.
So you're, we're asking for money and now we're asking for more money.
More money, more money, more money.
Yeah, so I would make this argument that we are on a one-time basis asking for more money because next year that $600,000 falls off completely and should we have a successful campaign, a successful referendum, the voters would be saying tack that right back on plus. And so it is a one-time, the $600,000 is one-time and it falls off next year and that mill rate will drop back down and then the voters will decide if a referendum pushes that back down or not. I don't know if that, if that makes sense, but so I understand your, your concern and I would say again, we, part of, part of this was looking at what the Citizens Advisory Committee had, had brought forward too, which was to look at alternative ways in which to handle some of these projects, the 1.6 million at the high school. And this was one of the solutions, was to use Act 32 to do that. And I would say over the course of two years, 20 cents increase, 2 percent, is pretty good.
Yeah, so I think Nancy, we've talked about that because one is if you temporarily raise it, then the gap between wherever that might be in a referendum seems smaller versus if you keep it low, you know what I'm saying, like it appears to be average to, school finance is not, it's, you see what I'm saying is that if it temporarily takes the first increment now, then it looks like it's a bigger gap when it goes to referendum versus trying to explain if it's at 994 to cover that drop because we've used Fund 41 and then it's going to seem like a dollar or a dollar fifty or whatever it is in terms of that. So there's, it depends upon like your perspective on it. It's like, are you taxing me now in increments or am I going to get it all in one big thing, you know, when the referendum, when, not should, when the referendum passes? Yeah.
Yeah, but to Nancy's point, we raise it 20 cents now and then we turn around and raise it another buck thirty or something like that if the referendum passes.
Right, versus a buck fifty all at once, right? Yeah, I, yeah, I don't, it's not a...
I just would lose sight of where the money's going because the taxpayers want us to take care of our facilities. So even though it's kind of a shell game, which way you do it can't be a conversation we have in isolation. It's about taking care of our facilities and I think the taxpayers would want us to do that, even if it means going up 1014 this year. I think that the message, part of the messages we heard was find, like you said already, find alternative ways, but also take care of these things where we can. So I think the project list is long enough that the taxpayers will understand, understand that, especially when we go off to referendum.
Just to clarify, the two on this memo here, there's a couple of the numbers are wrong, right? The use of Fund 41, I'm pretty sure, because your recommendation doesn't match what's on the thing. The use of Fund 41, 60 and the 150, I assume those are, 60 is supposed to be 175. I think it's just an Excel thing that went down.
Sorry, Kevin, I am not following where you are.
On your memo that's in there, the chart you have?
Hmm, the chart to, just to you guys?
Yeah.
Kevin, whatever's just to you guys, I'll take a look at that and make any corrections. Sorry.
Looking at the numbers and what you wrote in the recommendation. What's the, do you know offhand what's the single most we've ever had to use of Fund 41? The one-time year.
Now, I'll tap my hat, I've got a big old spreadsheet of where we've had it since 1996 and so I can come back with that information. I'm trying to even think how high it's been because it's been above 1.2. So, yeah.
Because, I mean, depending on what our greatest hit has ever been and what, you know, the highest average thing we have, I think that would really make it, is that where your recommendation came from as far as what to do? Because I mean, that really would put a basis for what we need to really leave in there in case something...
Yeah, my recommendation really came from the piece on the property value and the amount that the mill rate would go up from a property values standpoint, we have no control over that at all. Okay? And so whatever increase is associated with, with that, that's hard, that's hard to control.
Yes.
As far as where we, where we had our huge swing in health insurance, right, and that drove us into a deficit, while you could certainly argue we have no control over that as well, it was still going into a deficit. And so whatever we lost from that standpoint, I made the connection, why don't we as a starting point, take those dollars out of Fund 41 to mitigate at least that portion of the mill rate increase, which is about seven cents.
I would, I mean, I'd like to go back and look and see what we've, what's our biggest use has, or use has been and try to see if that's something that could potentially happen again, just so we have enough money in there to cover our bases with it.
Sure.
And then from there, I mean, we're talking about using the money and they want us to do all these things. We have money. Why don't we use it? They're going to say, well, you want more money now, aren't you using the money you already have? That's something, that's my concern with this. We have the money and we can still have a bit of a safety net in there, why not go for it?
Yeah, I would, I would say one of Todd and I's major concerns and maybe some just, there is quite a bit of deferred maintenance on the roofing side in this district, a lot of...
On the what?
Roofing.
Okay.
Lot of 1969 sections across, half the high school roofing is original.
Have you, have you considered the other schools? Because we spent, it seems like in the past several, several years, we spent an awful lot of money on the high school. What about, what about the roofing in the other schools and that kind of stuff? What kind of shape is it in? What year is it? What?
So, what I meant to, the facility was a huge plan, it was, 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 it
I didn't want to put a number on the proposal, just to throw a number out that wasn't going to be, but I can come back with that information in a proposal with a number as a starting discussion, again, for next, is that appropriate? Another, I don't know, another discussion? To bring a number forward on the 25th? Because that would mean that we would be voting on a new resolution for Act 32, right? That's ultimately what we're deciding on, is instead of having a resolution that said 600,000, it would say 550, or 525, or 5.
And the balance, do you mind a...
Fund 41. Unless, unless something would happen where we haven't, you know, there's always variables throughout the year. If there's an amazing health insurance year, hey, let's go touch it. And we don't have to touch Fund 41, then great. But we want to have that in the budget, should it need to be.
However...
What's your timeline of needing an action on that?
Prior to October 1. Under current law.
We've got a meeting scheduled for next week. Would you, would you want to discuss it at that point?
Sure.
I mean, we can cover it then, and then decide to, it's actually going to be on the 25th.
Okay, that would be good.
I have one more question on 41.
And make sure the public can get that on the public package.
Yeah. One more question on Fund 41. Like anything else, it started out at zero, it got up to 1.2 or more, how did it get up, and how do we do it again?
Yep, so...
Otherwise, it's just planned obsolescence, you know?
Yeah, yeah, it's a good question. So this is a fund that you can only levy into at the annual meeting. And that's the only time you can put money into it. So we actually, our, the plan on the 26th is to actually levy some dollars into Fund 41, because we have projects right now that fall under the general operations that we can handle, and to use Fund 41 is advantageous. So it could have been that there were years in which this district just said, we see that we have a good fortune, that we have more revenue than we currently have expenditures, let's put some of that into Fund 41 and not spend it. Or it could have been budgeted in Fund 41 to spend, and it might have been a good year, greater revenues or lesser expenditures, and we just didn't have to actually draw it out of Fund 41, they just let it sit there and roll over to the next year. So there can be some strategic pieces to this in future years. If we have good years, we can put money into it at the annual meeting.
So you're saying if we have an exceptionally good year with health insurance claims and that kind of stuff, we cannot take the excess that we had budgeted for health insurance that we didn't have to spend, enroll it into Fund 41?
What you could do...
We can take out of Fund 41 to pay for health insurance.
No, 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 no. So in this instance, what we did was, because health insurance was such a huge swing, it gave us a deficit spending, there was projects that we did during 16, 17 that were eligible to be used for Fund 41.
Okay.
Right, so that's how we, that's how we...
You pay for those through Fund 41, you freed up other money to pay for...
Correct, correct. So that's how we made that, yeah.
Boy, that seems awfully full limitations, that you can't just, you know, spend a thousand less than we budgeted on health insurance. We're going to pop that in 41 so that we can plan on a couple of years of doing a roof at HCE or something, you know?
The idea is to have, DPI sets up these funds so that it's not just all this general fund balance that the public doesn't know what you're doing with, right? Fund 41 is set up so that the public says, those are extra dollars that Whitman has, and we know that they're only going to use it on maintenance of the district. This district also, we have Fund 46, okay? And that's also something that goes towards maintenance and site improvements, but it can't be spent for another four years. However...
Low amount, too, right?
It's a very low amount, it's a hundred dollars. So if you, however, however, if you have a good year in which there's a surplus at the end, money can now go in Fund 46 to show the public, hey, we had a good year, we're going to put that over here for our rainy day maintenance fund as well.
Do you have any questions, Kevin? Okay, so you'll bring that back next week if you want to send out a memo, or maybe this week, it's fine. I need a second, we'll talk about that on the public package.
Okay.
All right, thank you. So now we move to, back to 5B, to discuss the facilities planning draft survey area. Go ahead.
You're coming back to summer school, or no? Yeah.
Well, who do you think, who did you ask here?
Sure, yeah, we get to hear, we get an extra one, you can have a next.
So I think I know some important person. I'm Bill Foster with School Reception, so I'm the survey person. And the goal tonight, really, is to, one is the person think conceptually about this survey from a, from a strategic standpoint, and get into the details. So, and if we have the strategy right, then the survey can arise itself. So for this particular project, we've got it up on the board, we're in the process of designing the survey, and the strategy for this project is a little bit different. And that is, we're introducing kind of a master planning framework. And we're trying to understand what are the priorities really by scale, in terms of what's important, what's not. That creates a line on the paper, if you will.
Oliver, that's...
I would love a copy. And, I was in another district, all dated, dated board, and it's working. And then the idea is, if we know that, that's kind of one line, we have to intersect with tax dollars. So if we can find out from the survey, how much money will you provide us, and what are your priorities?
Just wondering if you could pull the screen and projector, or is that not needed?
Why don't we...
Well, I mean, you can pull it up here. Just, this is for it, that can be, you know.
Here. I got it, I got it. I'm the driver.
We can scroll through together. So that's the idea, is, again, two things. One is, what are people's priorities, and then what is their tax tolerance, if any? And then from there, we can design what the project would be. So the, this thing we've got, laid out and printed, it's designed right now to be an eight-page survey, it'll be 211 by seven sheets of paper. So there's really eight panels to work with. It'll get mailed flat. So this is the opening letter, people will see this, that's important. The fact mainly kind of, sorry, don't know what it was planned. It'll be stapled, and it'll have eight of us, you buy and go up and serve inside. So the opening letter is written by Lisa, and so we've got, we've actually got Lisa to read it, it's a great letter. And it really explains, kind of, it rolls it into a little bit more, it's not just about facilities, it's really about planning, and it's going out with, from an academic standpoint. And then transitions into, really, the idea that part of our planning has to do with facilities. And probably the most important paragraph is, to date, the cost, to address all the products that are implied in the comprehensive study, Bay City 44.51, and I think we just learned that number today. We plunked that in, and then from a messaging standpoint, realized doing all this at one time is not feasible, and the projects need to be prioritized. Therefore, our goal is to develop a plan, upgrade the school phases, based on the community's priorities and willingness to financial support. Finding the scope and timing of the first phase of this plan is a gold survey. That's what we're up to. All the actions take the survey in two ways, and then people will be able to take it electronically, there'll be a unique seven-digit, sixteen-digit alphabet code, it'll be printed on, so it'll be a code for each survey. Or if they want to fill it out on paper, they can fill it out, stick it in the envelope, and mail it back to School Reception. Right now, we have the deadline of October 23rd, and the idea is that I'd be back on October 6th. November 6th, we have a meeting? A special meeting?
Yeah, so we, we're talking, so the dates are, these are all negotiable right now. So one of the challenges is, if we're ready to go, we could expedite it and increase. So we have a board meeting on October 23rd, but because there's five Mondays in that cohort, and we don't have a meeting on the 30th or the 6th, and one on the 13th, we're getting nervous till later we do, because it may take us more than one meeting to go to resolve and make the decision. So I guess those dates are, we have October 23rd and November 6th in there, but there isn't a scheduled meeting right there. Depending on, I'm guessing there will be some conversations.
Absolutely.
That we may, and we may have public there, and I don't know what that looks like. So we can back those dates up if we want to come back? No, we don't have...
You're right, there's just a five Monday, October situation there, so like a three-week gap there.
It just wasn't the normal second and fourth.
Right, and it's, my other challenge is, three Monday nights.
Yes, and we were trying to work with this definitely also.
Shouldn't it be the other way around?
Other boards got there first.
Excuse me?
It's not going well.
Check's in the mail, baby.
So, so that's the opening letter, and again, timeline, really, it's somewhat dependent on whether the survey finalized or not. And then basically, the timeline is, once finalized, about two weeks to print the mail. And then we like to keep the survey open for over two weeks, three weekends. And then about two weeks to, to get all the data entered and create the meeting. All right. So on the second page, the first half is responding information, various state board. Want to be able to decide the data by age, by municipality, see if there are any employee, employee, if they're a parent, and by the way, if there's no, and no, they're not a parent, non-employee, then they fall into that most important, non-parent, non-staff group across, which is really 75% of the community, they're going to begin to create what happens here. The, can we get into the background information?
Hold on, why do we need to know their age?
We want to make sure our seniors are well-represented in the data, because it's easy to reach out, obviously, get staff, get parent input, we want to be sure our seniors are well-represented. That's why we care about that. The other thing is, we know seniors tend to vote more than the younger.
So if they don't fill out the survey, what do we, can't do nothing about it?
No, we don't, but we'll have that footnote on there saying our seniors were underrepresented. 98% of the surveys we do to seniors actually overrepresented. The other thing you can do is you can say, oh, our seniors like to get new, so if you have enough data, so you can just say, for people who are 65 and older, they like to have lip drops, they like whatever they want.
These are just going to be mailed to people in the district, correct?
Yeah.
So then, do we need to have on here, do not live in the district?
We do, for, while there's, you hope that you mail it to the district, we do, both mail them as possible, those outside. The other scenario we have is, we will ask all staff to take the survey, even if they don't live in the district.
Okay.
And then, but we will remove the non-residents from the management.
Okay.
But you could get a split family that the person, well, if either parent says they live in the district or one does.
Open enrollment? Are they getting surveyed? They may not live in the district.
They, well, you can also provide them with a survey. Typically, we do, and then we remove their data from that support question. But we want to put, so they have the choice whether or not to. The next section really talks about background information, specifically, we think of this in terms of what are the, do you want my money? These are the needs. So we created primarily three pillars, the school safety, building systems and infrastructure and learning spaces. So the needs fall into those three. But then we actually spent a lot of time kind of debating, to what extent should we communicate, what's been done, excuse me, in 2017? And how was that funded, which is a can of worms? Where are you right, and where are you after right? So we did explain that in 2017, the district was able to address the most pressing maintenance needs by using energy efficiency exemption funding, which is called Act 32. This is what we've done. And then we needed to explain the remaining projects to not refund directly to our outer general operating budget without directly impacting instructional programs and services. So that was as succinct as, we can write that to explain, we've done something, here's how it worked, and here's why we can't use that money.
I just wondered if our opening line shouldn't be like what you have on the last? Because when I read it, read the background information, I thought it should say upfront that we, you know, based on a condition, a facility condition report first, that that report was done, and then based on that report, we then did, we're able to address our most pressing...
Yeah, that would be a lot of sense, yeah, it's a very good...
Because we've had a long-range plan, too, I mean...
Maybe you move that to the end of it.
Yeah.
Say, here are the needs, and then you explain.
How?
This little paragraph is moved all around the survey.
Yeah.
So it's used to be...
Yeah, the background is, we've got this long list of projects, and then based on that long list, we have now taken care of a number of them, using energy efficiency. I thought that term was confusing, too. People are not going to know what the heck our energy efficiency exemption funding. So I don't know if there's another way of just saying, using a different word, I don't know. That sounds pretty complicated. Maybe we have to use that, but...
Yeah.
Even if you took the word exemption out of there, energy efficiency funding, possibly that just simplifies it for people. That's my thought.
Or you could just call it, you know, special energy efficient funding.
Yeah.
Or something.
The word special, I don't know.
It was, well, because that's what it was. It's a special act that applies to just this, and rather than get too technical, I think just call it special.
Anyway, that was my suggestion, paragraph.
Is that word exemption, is that spelled correctly?
Nope, it's got a C in there.
I cross it out anyways.
Okay. Yeah, I like that better.
And I like it, I get down, because it's really not the future part, it's kind of ...
Okay.
So then we've got school safety, and again, this has been tweaked a little bit today, so safety of our students, priority, he'll start on entry blocks of property secured, monitor building entrance, and addition, there's the modified vehicle, bus traffic, flow, to improve student industry safety at some of our schools. And we've got the building systems, which are pretty self-explanatory. So these other systems will last a few years before actual repairs.
You might add our classrooms and building, or our build, it's not just the classrooms that are not designed, it's other spaces as well. Our classrooms and hallway, I don't know.
Well, you don't do a learning in classes, or a learning...
We don't, we do do learning in buildings, though, in hallway, so, not that you, I don't, I see where you're going with that, yeah. As a result of her, that's fine, if you want to just leave a question.
Yeah, I think somebody had asked a question, why do you ask this question? Right up there. Let me explain, there's two reasons. One is, first of all, it makes a good headline. We can say 70% of respondents support exploring facilities, give you permission to continue to explore. If 70% say no, that tells us that we shouldn't waste any time. I suspect people say yes, continue to explore. But probably more importantly, if you don't have anything there, you've got a lot of tax. People see a lot of tax, they go, I'm going to explore, right? So putting in question their forces of response, and to then read more critically, what the information is, you just provide us an interest cost, and we pull it up. That's why it's, as I asked, it's a computer review.
That question? Does it unlock the rest of the survey if it's electronic, or is all things still available?
All things still available.
I don't, I think it's relevant. Yeah? I do have...
I don't think so, they're going to go out and say, I don't support it. Oh, what do you, what do you think? And the other thing is, if they tell you electronic, that's also, you're going to see a property person. So no, they're not going to stop there, they're going to do the survey, and then deal with it. Yeah, I got that, I told you, yeah, yeah, I told you, okay. So again, the reason is there is to have pictures and read what the needs are. And also, is there any opening? And there's probably, there will probably be a percentage, 20% will say no, and no, no, and hold on. Okay, or, or we don't, so it's okay.
I have a question. Should we clarify exploring a facility a one time? It's not a reoccurring, and maybe the public have been hearing about these reoccurring...
This is a capital requirement, not an operation requirement.
Okay, but will they know that?
Well, in fact, this really is, what we are positioning is the first phase of a long-term management.
Possible, but not reoccurring, meaning I've been here.
Well, it can be reoccurring.
Right, I know that, but I just wondered, okay.
She's trying to, she's trying to see if we should point out the stuff that, yes, we know, but that other people might not know.
Okay.
Just because we know it doesn't mean it's not worth pointing out.
Actually, what I was really thinking is that maybe the public has heard about reoccurring. But if you are comfortable that that is not...
I think I would, but another candidate...
Okay, I get that. That's fine.
And you have to explain this, this time.
Yeah, I was actually more thinking, yeah, the public.
So I have just a basic concern on, I guess, on this, to this point, and that is, and I think I've mentioned this before, I'm sure I have, that it makes it, this makes it sound like we haven't been taking care of our stuff. And in fact, we started this whole process several years ago with wanting to, to build new or add on to HCE, and maybe do something about rebuilding the high school pool, because, you know, and the way I look at it, taxpayers... So, so I have just a, a basic concern on, I guess, on this, to this point, and, and that is, and I think I've mentioned this before, I'm sure I have, um, that it makes it, this makes it sound like we haven't been taking care of our stuff. And in fact, we started this whole process several years ago with wanting to, um, to, uh, build new or add on to HCE, and maybe do something about rebuilding the high school pool, because, you know, and the way I look at it, taxpayer, board member, whatever, the way I look at it is, you need to be able to pay to repaint your house if you need more, if you need to repaint it, right, Quinn? You gotta repaint it, you gotta, but, but you shouldn't necessarily have to borrow money for it. What you have to borrow money for maybe is to like put on an addition, or, you know, build new, or something like that. So, you know, people, I mean, to me, this looks like we haven't been taking care of our stuff, and now we need to, to get a major cash injection from the public to be able to do it, just a minute.
I don't agree, I wanna tag out when you're done.
Okay, but, but where we started wasn't in trying to basically get money from folks to pay for our ten-year plan all at once, but was to, the, the major, you know, get a major injection of, of cash to, to do the major building stuff, you know? Add on to HCE maybe, and, and rebuild the pool. And so, my concern is, and, and to that effect, we're asking half of what, to do those things, half of what this forty, like you say, forty-four and a half, and I'm not gonna ask forty-four and a half, but, and I know that's just to make a point, but do you see what I'm talking about? This seems to have migrated away from where we started this to begin with, and I'm not exactly in favor of asking folks for money to do stuff that we had a ten-year plan to do.
Can I ask you a question, John?
Okay.
If you, the last sentence here, because I thought that, in a way, that sentence, if the public chooses to address these needs, wasn't strong enough on saying large-scale capital needs, and maybe that would address your concern, because what we don't want it to sound like is we're, we're addressing routine maintenance, so it doesn't, maybe it does say large-scale capital?
I think there's a.
Where do you want that?
Since we can, yeah, actually, well, John.
Okay.
Which would say something like, our schools have been well maintained, um, some of our major building systems.
Correct. That would help, right? That's what I would like to see in here.
At the end of the day, we haven't done anything to keep our things updated, our stuff is outdated, right?
I don't agree that we're making it fluffy.
Well, as soon as you.
Do you think that we?
I'm gonna answer your question.
Okay.
I think that as soon as you put on a new roof, the, the next day, it's a day old, and the day after that, it's two days old. So from the very beginning, it starts to degrade, just like that, from birth and start to age, okay? So I think these things have been aging, and again, I'll go with the boiler thing, just because it may be sixty years old with a, on paper, life expectancy of twenty-five, you know, have a, a boiler person go in there and tell you that it's, that it's past its prime, I think it'd be a challenge to find. So just because the calendar says this thing's forty years outdated, doesn't mean that it's, that it's not perfectly good. It all depends on how well people maintain stuff, you know, there's a difference between a, a car in Arizona, and a car in, in, in Wisconsin that's, that's twenty years old, you know? It's why the air, the, the military and airlines parks airplanes in the, in the desert. So, uh, in other words, you can take care of stuff, or you can not take care of stuff, and in many aspects, we have been taking care of stuff. That doesn't mean things, uh, some things don't age for the worse, and that's why we had a ten-year plan to do things like, whether it's paint, or roof, or whatever, and so, my, my concern is still the same, I think we're, uh, we're giving the impression that we haven't been taking care of stuff, even though we have, but things still age. And, uh, um, it's, uh, I think we're, we've migrated into asking, uh, for money for something that, at least at the beginning, that's not where this started.
All right, let me ask this question, does the board, is it in the jury, the board agrees that some money from the referendum could be used to replace major building systems that have been so likely comfortable with that, or not, and being able to still consider? No, I think the goal we wanted to do this time is to actually get the, the last time we narrowed in our focus on the project, and we wanted, and we asked feedback, and now we're going to, after doing the full set, we say, most important. So we're looking for something to give it the last, or not earmarked, and you just actually want to, you know, just saying this is where, in the head of the year, like, uh, there's, now we want to.
Is this anything near what the community, um, group talked about?
I don't see the negative, John. I, I see where they speak of, uh, the lifespan, I think anybody that's familiar with this knows they're well maintained. I mean, but it's, but I don't see, and I, and again, myself, I don't see anything.
I, okay, that's fine, I understand your point, I, I disagree.
Well, this is structured over there to bring back data to the board to ultimately provide direction on the referendum. It's okay to say, this is what we believe is highest priority based on feedback, and that may mean pulling out certain projects that we are planning for in ten-year, moving forward capital improvement plan, that aren't referendum projects, that's okay to do, we just have to be sure that there's any duplication of proposed renovations or additions that we're planning appropriately to accommodate those different projects. But it should still be in the position moving forward to make this. I think I can add some language here to this comment. Okay, and, you're okay to keep to the question?
Yeah.
All right, so then the idea is to go to each school, again, this is master planning, so there's, there is a devaluation by every grade in each school, identify, uh, the needs, or issues, I guess we're calling them. Edgerton arguably has maybe the most, has the most bullets, but is a little bit older, uh, so we've got different levels in the gym system stall,
Or use multiple images. That's what I'm talking about, is throw, just throw the text, new construction on top of the yellow. And maybe arrows go into that hashed in area saying demolished portion or something is possible. Just another idea, it doesn't have to. No, they're talking about, you know, forty amps versus the current.
I do have a question though, if, do all of these address ADA, if someone, how do you highlight, if they say, no, I don't want the cafeteria done, then they're not, how do you get into that? If they go all eight of these though.
Correct, and this, I think this option of all the schools is probably the most interconnected, right?
Yeah.
And so, the other schools, I think, have more variables in play because of which projects are in all of the schools, type of, than others. There is some building infrastructure dollars, and I think specifically in that category, we have additional dollars for the existing building to pick up ADA compliance renovations there, outside of the renovated space, so per bills common. Anything in the red color that's renovation, an existing building?
Yeah.
Pinkish.
That, that's what, if renovation or new construction has to be brought to ADA compliance, so we can assume that. Then we have additional dollars in the very, the existing gray area to make sure we've got any ADA compliance issues. The budget has that, I don't know if we communicate that fully.
I know, I wonder if there's a way to simply say.
It's in the background, yeah.
That they're not accessible.
That will trust.
I know.
Yeah, but, but changing may mean any, are you suggesting we had questions, would you like to resolve any compliance issues?
Not a separate question, but I think, I think people think we should be in compliance, and it helps to solve the referendum. I don't know if there's.
They just expect that, it's kind of like we're gonna build a quality building.
Yep, but, but she's, she's right.
What I'm saying, if they don't, if they don't understand that they need all of these to make it accessible, if they don't.
So we could put a little, would you say all existing or all renovated and new construction would address ADA compliance issues?
Yeah, in addition to energy efficiency issues too, right, windows, you know, there's, I don't want to get too detailed here, but.
But that's not really as limiting factor.
Can I think?
Something.
I don't want to totally highlight ADA, but the other issue I looked at here were some of the energy efficiency. I know. Yeah. That might help, or at the bottom, or whatever. Well, um.
Because otherwise, they would accomplish that, otherwise they would accomplish that in the background of renovation, in their own spaces. We've got a little space right under the, some, we're in a natural mode.
Oh yeah, okay, I just think HCE is worse.
Or where you mentioned the.
In terms of accessibility, not, the other buildings are. Right, that's, this one is more challenging.
So, or, that first paragraph where you mentioned it's more expensive to heat and maintain, you could also work in the, the, you know, we also, there are also serious ADA compliance issues, and granted, you've kind of readdressed that in a bullet, but I mean, in the first bullet, but you, you really don't want to have stuff.
We actually added a little, we still have this, this little bullet.
So, and my first bullet, it says, creating accessibility challenges, meaning the cap students have community numbers, doesn't that hit?
It doesn't show that these are, that you, that these are solutions down here. If, in other words, oh, I might want to enhance, not enhance the gym, but it doesn't say, it's not going to address the ADA issue there or something.
I think they uncover, you're concerned by, by putting that, I think they described the problem, probably, but we don't, we can back on the ADA.
Okay.
I mean, it's, it's also easy enough to say the older sections of the school are more expensive to heat and maintain and create serious ADA, or, or create significant ADA issues, or something like that. I mean, that's just a thought.
You good with HD? Okay, and the Edgerton elementary, similar. So, HD, we came up with seventeen point two million, that's a potential five or two, we have seven point six, same format. We said, well, this, this school is generally in good condition following the people that are in the, where we've dealt with, right now, with the need for a dedicated, lax, a dedicated cafeteria resulting from, we have, right, since this is redone, it was daily grading, everyone challenged with the population departments, this school is older, that is one law in seven states, what we do. We've got our windows, heating systems, library.
Yeah, the library, if I may. Yeah, so, the library was redone in like two thousand and one, and it used to have natural light, what is the need for natural light, light now? So, in two thousand and one, it was where the fourth grade classrooms are now, I think it was actually larger at the point, they moved it to the current location, and if we're addressing it in Edgerton as far as not having natural light, among other things, shouldn't we also be addressing it at the middle school, if that is the case, because the middle school is in a similar kind of location? I would think so, I mean, I don't know what the natural light really has to do with any of that.
It taps into more the goal of creating as high quality educational environments as possible, our design renovation from natural light into as many of the education spaces. Or we may do that, or maybe do it, which is.
Might do that what?
Would you put it in, other than drill, like you put some skylights in or something?
Doesn't that create additional roofing issues down the road?
We're addressing some of them, Roger, that's, I don't know if it creates additional issue.
Kind of look at skylights, those flat roofs, eventually they all leak.
And it doesn't, they don't necessarily have to be a lattes, you know, there's course degree options, and transit options, and lots of things.
It all costs money.
But, I guess, with that too, it sounds like we just need furnishings, what major renovations are there going to be, other than maybe adding, what, other than wall dividers? Because I don't think there's any major walls that would have to be coming down in there.
No, so I think it's finishes, it's furnishings, it's looking at, right now, there's a computer lab, that was continually less new, so we can turn that into maybe a major space, computer labs, something like that. Again, without getting into a high level of deep talk, trying to describe that, we're going to get as open as possible to the walls, to develop that, which is.
Also, scrap the natural, I kind of mean, that was a, I think, someone put out something to see, or, well, you could see, that's, that's crazy, but we could call them a good group.
Yep.
So we're gonna take that out. And then we do have the restrooms, and we still need updates to address ADA.
Is that in the solution somewhere? I don't, I don't, is that in one of these solutions, the multi-purpose stage? I didn't see it offered as a.
Dedicated.
And maybe we should put that. Absolutely, because then you're, the multi, you're, you're creating and renovating the staging area, which would then tell me that you're updating it for ADA, without having to put the words in there. You're updating the restrooms and.
I was curious.
If that's part of, I'm sorry, part of number three? You might want a separate.
Separate bullet for the restrooms.
Okay.
I think building it into the cafeteria, it's not doing something separate, right? We were addressing it one by one, and then to, uh. Renovating existing gym to become a dedicated cafeteria.
I don't know, are they or aren't they? Because I know I've been in that building, and there were some ADA issues for the bathrooms that, that are challenges to you, correct? Uh, the, uh, bathroom, bullet point number, the last bullet point sites needing to address restrooms and multi-purpose. Okay, so the question I had was.
So you can't, so.
Where does that correlate with a bullet point on the, or a question on the box?
Just to jump in, I think the intent is that number four that you see, you would also include the ADA compliance, you may prefer it separated now.
Okay, that'd be great. If you could just clarify, clarify that somewhere in here, that's all I need.
The multi-purpose stage is, you can't access, you can only access by steps, and it also is very small. And I would just add that, just having had a, all of the students in the gym, now that we're about four hundred and seventy students, it's really hard to even get all of the, all of the kids inside the gym. It is, it is a very small, it's the smallest gym in, in the district, so. I know you identified that as a point for HCE about having a small gym, this one's even smaller, so I'm.
So maybe, maybe the word isn't just a dedicated gym, but an adequate gym. It's not just, you know, we don't have an adequate size. A dedicated gym that meets the needs of the student population there, we don't have.
Chris, unlike HCE, you're, you don't have a, a separate gym and cafeteria capability, do you?
The multi-purpose room is in the basement, so we do have a multi-purpose room that we do access and utilize. It is very limiting as far as what can be done, it has a very low ceiling, so it really require, I mean, what you can do there is basically floor activity.
That's, that's essentially your version of a small gym, right, that HCE has, however, HCE is able to use their small gym as a ca, the cafeteria, therefore leaving a large gym available all the time, you don't have that ability, right?
Correct.
Okay.
I think the first bullet does cover that, the bullet for HCEs that I thought was true as well is the gym is too small to meet the needs of physical education and for large group presentations.
So, and copy the HCE gym.
Well, I think, there is two different issues there, from a size thing, I think, Chris, like, of the size pieces, but those two is the fact that they don't have a dedicated gym, because that's, that's a different issue, you need to have different.
So you guys had that bullet point, but don't necessarily take out.
What's already there. So I just have a question for going along here, I guess, the assumption I made in the items that are listed below, under simple phrases, is that it addresses everything above, without having to restate the things again, I don't want us to get in places that were like, restate the bullets in the number of issues, the assumption is, here's the problem, this will fix the problem without saying, and this is how we're going to address it, right?
Otherwise, you gotta rewrite me, everything's.
Right, so can you just, I'm getting a little lost in adding a lot of these elements down below, like adding a dedicated gym that will have, I have, well, the ball we said is an issue, so wouldn't the solution like solve the problem we listed up above?
I'm just giving feedback that I don't think that's clear enough.
I don't, I, I agree.
A dedicated gym, it's not just that, it's also dedicated and large enough, that's all.
Okay, yeah, so the, I get the, the space thing, right, so dedicated is one thing, in this case, size thing, I just want to make sure we don't like add every qualification of the ball in terms of.
That's gonna end up pretty wordy.
Yeah, I get that, I also think it's got to be clear where this, these issues are. Okay.
I'm just thinking, I mean, the major, the biggest issue is that you just, it's not dedicated to it, you have cafeteria, you gotta go through the multiple lunches, take upside down, that takes away the gym classes, where the HD doesn't necessarily have an issue like that. Besides it, yeah, that's a problem, don't get me wrong, but the bigger problem is that it's not dedicated to what it's used for. A good portion of the day is taken away from being able to have the activities or whatever else might be in there, or if some class need to use it for open space, they can't do that.
Okay? Okay, I got it.
The, what is, uh, this is just kind of irrelevant, maybe not, what's gonna go in that little courtyard of that number one, where it actually happened?
Rainwater.
That like really odd L-shaped courtyard that's in there?
Yeah, it'd be green space, or.
Is it, is it significantly, is it any significant size to be able to use for anything, or should they just close it up?
No, I think the intent is we've questioned classrooms that surround those areas.
So to keep the natural light coming in. Thank you. So just need to, exactly, so just, just need to make sure that it's, it's sufficiently si, sufficiently sized that they can do something with it, other than just, you know, let the rainwater feed the weeds, you know?
Okay, we go to the middle school. Okay, middle school's, uh, not the most, each unit, but it's a very, never traded.
All right.
So here is, is, uh, was in actually pretty good shape, apparently, good condition, uh, just some interior finishes, we got a, uh, career in education, it's updating, we're merging curriculum and science. We've got a restroom with ADA and concerns with particular traffic, well, along the south, in sixteen state.
You're missing a period that's in the third block.
Sure.
And, when I read it, like, um, existing career, what, yeah, room, space, something.
Just need updates.
Yeah, exactly, education spaces, I mean, existing career and techno, tech ed spaces. Facilities. Spaces, facilities, classrooms.
Updates.
Yeah.
By the way, this hasn't been approved yet, so.
We will.
You getting that done?
Grade's going down.
And if I, if all series, we'll go on, so we have, uh, some good groups, so, we will catch it all, but, so, this is pretty straightforward, are we okay with the three choices? Okay? We want to go to the high school. And we have a little bit more, if you need.
Spectators, do we want to go with patrons? Compass, everyone?
Yeah. Second bullet, my dear.
Visitors, I don't know, yeah, something.
All visitors?
Patrons, they might be students.
Yeah.
But, I agree, that word is actually the word that you want, to justify you.
Yeah.
It's that, the correct term does sound like, but.
Patron sounds like something.
It does, doesn't it?
I think the word visitors gets at the public a little bit more, even though it does include.
But it won't, it won't encompass everybody.
Okay, yeah.
Students and visitors.
That's perfect.
If that, if that helps.
Users? Students and visitors, sounds like that's what everybody, in general, is. Okay?
What about your conditioning for high school, Jim? If we brought, last time, it was underneath number two, so, right? But it's such a well-known, I think.
Well, well-known by, by people that I guess have been in there, I think a bunch of the community probably hasn't been in there, because of, the, yep, it was.
Do you want to add a need that they're currently designing?
Yeah, and, yeah, then you could maybe, pardon the, like, do you think it's, yeah, that kind of a whole.
We get, we get a lot of. Yeah, we get a lot of complaints.
That would be.
We're moving to number two, and then, I think, so you're not, like, native point.
Or, or you're even putting it as true, if you put it as true, but it needs to be.
Spell dog?
So I have a bullet point, but not in the question.
Well, you have to, you can put it as true, but it's gotta be.
Number two, you know, the.
So don't ask, come out another question.
I, I don't know, I think there, I think there would be value to adding the question, because it's a significant expenditure for one focused thing, and the rest of it is not a focused thing, it's, it's this stuff in general throughout the facility for number two, but the gym is a focused space and a focused expenditure, I think it needs to be a separate question.
But it is, it might be a major point of concern, but, but, as, as we look at the solutions, if you get a hundred and fifty thousand, we're talking about forty-four and a half million, in the news.
Yeah, but there's, there's other bullet points on here, they're less than a hundred and fifty thousand, aren't there? So, I, I don't know that it comes down to the, the cost of the, of the, of the bucket number versus the focus of the bucket number, I mean.
Arguably, there is a cut point where you don't go below it, there is going to be a minimum, is it only a hundred and fifty thousand, or?
That's okay.
The question is to.
That's a whole different deal. But the concern is.
That's right.
Right now, we're holding a three thousand dollar budget for our HSE, but that included the weight room, subsidiary locker rooms. So, again, ultimately, the board, once we have feedback from the survey, will be able to, in the high areas, and mix with all of those, but I think the key piece here is, to what extent do we need to isolate that, right now, so, can it be in two, or does it need to be?
It can be either, either way.
I, I'm in favor of a separate question for the gym. Because I, I think it's easy enough, well, well enough defined and focused, and, as, as Quinn said, well enough known issue, that we can find out if it really is for the community as a whole or not.
It's kind of interesting, there's elements of all and one less air conditioning, but actually, in some surveys, it does vary as well, so, if you want to know.
Probably, there's gonna be, you have it, just like guaranteed.
You will, but then you can't quantify it.
Right, that's why we need to identify it.
Okay, well, that ain't say, let's.
I have a question too, again, about the ADA, can you, this would be another one where, you know, a star might renovate, expand cafeteria, that number three might include an ADA upgrade, and maybe number five doesn't, I don't know how, but then, could you put little stars, these include the ADA compliance issues? I just think that helps.
Yeah, we'd be the same comment, anything renovated or new.
Or maybe make, even though we assume it, maybe make a bullet point here that, or an asterisk, just to highlight that. If we're doing it at HCE's corners in Edgerton.
Okay. And I think, today, based on some feedback over the weekend, we did modify number seven, renovate the pool locker rooms to create a dedicated cafeteria entrance, and then print the CTA, but the new pool is not built, which will be tested on page seven.
Oh, I wondered that, if you could make a connect, a stronger connection, and definitely pull the pool up ahead of the financial.
Yeah, I was gonna say that too, yeah, just gonna say that.
That should flow better.
Yeah.
Well, we'll get there in a second. We okay with high school? Okay?
We circle back to Ernest's conversation, going, going down on the bullet points, uh, high school actually had a multiple point of concern. So, I know we, you know, we've mentioned before about concern about spending too much focus on high school, we have more bullet points asking questions about fifteen years of high school, and less, so, it's not our point of the conversation, or whether to be judging the fans, here, we have more issues that we're asking on, just a fact.
Yep.
So, okay, that was it, I just wanted to make sure.
But, and, and there I added to it, yes, but what I did was I added something that I, I think has been a community issue, at least comes up every year, as a, a pretty good community issue, yet some of these other things on here to go to, to my point before is, are not, have not been community issues, and were going to be handled in the ten-year plan, so it goes back to my thing of asking, you know, the questions for asking for money for stuff that we could handle otherwise, but major chunks of things, which is where this all started, weren't accounted for so well, so much. And you talked about, you know, if you ask the question, you're gonna have data that may or may not go the way you'd hoped, well, you know, maybe some of these bullets need to be out of the high school, if, if we can take care of things without, in, in a ten-year plan, without having to ask for money for them.
Okay, so, let me explain this page, um, the, I think the swimming pool should go ahead.
Yeah.
But, but the reason it's there was, it looked totally different last week, so I made up this entire question as well as what would be done, so, this is all kind of imaginary, and I have dollars, it was only off by a hundred thousand. I guess the pool would cost eight, only became seven point eight, but in any event, the idea was, I don't know if these are viable options, because, like, Mike, and the, the cost of expanding the, the six lane pool to eight lanes, sounds like it'd be near near the cost of a new pool.
It would be, and that's what our, our community, our advisory committee put up numbers to this, and they said it would cost nearly the same to build a brand new pool than it would to rip out the wall without any construction, or there might say option one doesn't even do anything worth even having on there.
Nope.
Because people are gonna say, well, we just repair it, repair it, but doing the things on there isn't gonna fix the issues at hand that I listed above.
And two years ago, replacing the pool was four point six million.
That included the locker rooms, though.
That included the locker rooms.
Right.
Locker rooms and pool, four point six million, which is.
And the seating area.
Three point two less than.
It included expanding some.
Just redoing it. And expanding some on the deck, yeah, putting some on the deck.
And then.
And then putting, uh, where there's, do you know the layout up there now? So the solid glass panes, putting new, new, expanding bleachers up there, versus the ones that don't work anymore that are up there, and replacing those solid glass panes with glass overhead doors, so you can open the viewing area up to the space temporarily, and then close it back up for ventilation and moisture control.
Yeah, I can speak to that.
Four point six million.
Comparability of that, I mean, we have to assume that we have to look out, if you're all down, expanding pools, it's, it's usually, and that, like, depends with me right now, but it's not just the gap, but it's also the height clearance we have in the diving ward, all the structure, and, and guarantee, I think, we have to raise that as well.
I never heard of the height, of the height thing as a, as an issue, I knew the tapered sides of the dive well were an issue, and the depth of the dive, dive well were the issue, as well. As well as in the lanes, the depth of the lanes not allowing diving off the, uh, off the side, let alone starting blocks. So, and as far as the thing goes, we do have a meet, don't we? We just.
It's not, the only purpose of having a meet is so you can have a parent night.
Right.
It serves no purpose otherwise.
But do we, is it like a scrimmage thing or do we have another, another school come in?
Another school comes in, but they, it's more or less, I don't know how else to describe it other than you have it so you can stop in the middle and recognize the parents.
Okay.
The, it counts, but it does it more or less because the times don't factor in.
No, they're not. It's apples to oranges.
But with, when you're talking about starting blocks, um, I don't know if the, the first sentence in general, um, not a big fan of, but one part of it specifically would be the lack of starting blocks needed. We had starting blocks. It's the fact that even if we did have them, you couldn't use them anyway. It almost sounds like you, if we just had the blocks, we would have it for competition.
So just take that off and say, I have only six lanes.
But, but I don't know if the six versus eight lanes have any significance to the average voter either. I mean, we know what those kind of specifics, uh, cause a problem for, but.
Okay, so we, well, and if we go away from option two, then we really have two options. We can repair the six lane or.
Would you have been an option one or be option two and option three?
Option two, option three.
Well, you want to have the option to pave over it?
Well, I've done that survey before.
Send him to Greenfield or something? Is that what you're thinking? Send him somewhere else? No swim program.
Well, you know, when the football field was half flooded all the time, it would have been easier just to close those gates too, you know, and six and a half million dollars cheaper.
My, uh, when my, when the advisory committee came back and gave us options, one of the options is not addressing here, and maybe that's what option three is supposed to be. It says build a new pool. They mentioned building it over in the middle school in its own area and the amounts that they gave with that were significantly cheaper than seven point eight.
So again, I can't speak to the prior ones, but I can say the intent was since we have the infrastructure, we have the infrastructure here, meaning the locker rooms and some of the supporting competition components, right? The additional bathrooms, the ticketing, the concessions, things that would support a competition venue, but financially in our recommendation, we need to rebuild it at the base.
So I, I don't wanna throw out what the advisory committee did because there's a lot of people on there that we need on our side. And if we're throwing out, well, we gave you this idea, you're not even addressing it. I don't want any part of that. That's a big concern with me.
I, I thought option three was an auditorium option. That's how I took it.
Cause that, that was one of the options they presented.
It certainly can be. You just need to restructure and reformat it. That wasn't, that wasn't ours.
Yeah, so rebuild, I think one option ought to be rebuild where it is and one option ought to be an auditorium. And I guess another option is to do nothing or something. I don't know, but, but the, uh, I, I do think that building, rebuilding where it is, I, I think you need to look at the, at the, there was a lot of work done, a lot of planning done and a lot of pricing and all this other kind of stuff done to come up with a solid four point six million dollar estimate. I know it was two years ago, but that shouldn't have gone up by, you know, seventy-five percent. So if you could please not reinvent the, I don't know if you've reinvented the wheel some or, or exactly what, but if you could please look at the old wheel and figure out what they've done and if it can be brought in anywhere near four point six or five million dollars. Because I don't understand the seven point eight. I just don't.
That seems really cheap based on other projects we've done, but I'm not the architect.
Well, I just ask that you guys look back at the stuff and figure out, there's, there's a way that they, I mean, it, it's not like, you know, we were missing, like it, it didn't include the ability to hold. It didn't, it, it was, it was not something, I think so. I, I don't remember, but it was not something that is like, oh, you wanted it to be able to hold water? Well, that's another three million, you know, it wasn't anything like that. It was.
So the other part that.
Well, shouldn't we talk as a board or is this a?
The part that that would impact that we have in front of here is if you build an auditorium over there, or that, I don't know how to be, stay in the high school by every curriculum.
Right.
I don't, you, you, yeah.
So we.
It's a standalone thing. I don't know. We can't have our high, I mean, well, yeah.
We may have to address that community concern, that community group concern by saying after, I mean, further evaluation that was a non-viable option because of impact to the middle school phys ed and, I mean, I don't know. I'm not, I'm not trying to just write something to blow it off. I don't think about it, but.
I just, I mean, I, I think that in my, there's a lot of things, to toss it out there, you'd have to know.
Lot of concern.
There's a lot of variables that could have a lot of cost that we have to bet that out if we wanted to attach a dollar sign to it as another option up here. That's why I was curious, Kevin, you said that the advisory committee.
They did bring that as a recommendation.
I know they recommended, but how did they, had an architect that gave it some dollars or?
They had a whole, if I must say, they had like a design and something on there as well. And they did come to us with a dollar amount. I'm trying to find it in our, I don't know if it's in our board packets or where it was.
I do recall, I don't know if there was a design, but I also do recall us, the board, just saying that.
Yeah.
So they, they, you know, they did, yes, it's an option. Is it a viable one? Probably not.
If I can interject that, the, um, the, when we, uh, cause I was a part of the, the team, the advisory committee, they didn't have actual designs, but, um, they had a number of people on the team who were engineers or in the field, um, themselves. And they kind of did some general, looking at space over at the middle school, looking at some space over here at the high school and felt like the middle school was the best option for the, for a nanatorium, yes. But they didn't have an actual company come do any designs or anything like that. It was all their own work.
We do have, um, designs though, proposed designs on rebuilding it where it is to code. And that's where they came up with the four point six.
We do, I think we need to put this to an end because if we're gonna score with the timeline, it's not a, or it's not a tomorrow, it's a tonight. I mean, we can fill the numbers if that's what the board has to do this tonight.
So. So let me just, so, so as a survey, we have to ask survey questions. The, there's a couple of ways to do this. I throw up this idea, which I'm not sure is the best way. Another way to do this is, is it sounds like, um, is to test the, a recommended plan. Okay, a recommended plan is, is whatever it is. Rebuild at the current location with eight lanes, dive well, blah, 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 blah. It's X number of million. And, and then we could test a, a funding support question, or you could ask against the same scale that we asked, what priority would you place in this? So if it ends up being, if it's high, and then, and then there's dollars, you could include it. If it's, if it tests lower, then it's, it's not gonna be included. Then it would be evaluated against the same scale as all the other projects. Cause a person might argue, well, that's not as important as improving traffic flow in middle school. So whatever it ends up being. So that would give you data to use, but, um, well, what I thought was, were there other options within updating your pool that you wanted to test? So that's where I came up with this idea. Is if you say, no, we don't like getting those who just don't want, you wanna test that, play and go back right that way.
Can I, before we answer that, Kevin, couldn't, doesn't, uh, as I'm looking at this, option three addresses, one of the reasons they thought a standalone was because we didn't think we could do an eight lane pool. At least we weren't looking at it at that time in the current location.
No, they could.
Were they looking at that, at that time? Because if the standalone became a standalone because we could do the eight lane?
It wasn't because of the eight lane. That wasn't the reason.
Why did they want the standalone? Do you remember?
Because of the cost, if I'm not mistaken, that they estimated for what it would take to keep part of the structure we currently have, redig the footprint and dig it out more. The cost was relatively close to building a brand new building, Jack, you've got some.
Okay.
Considering, um, that if you build in your pool.
And then you could take care of some of the space, space issues. So you would possibly move the fitness center into the current, um, pool area. And the fitness center would become part of the cheer dance part where now they're in a cafeteria or.
And redoing the locker rooms. You'd have locker rooms leading into the weight room area as well.
Yeah.
And the other issue is that even with the renovation and that space, you still couldn't host state events because it wouldn't be. You were seated. Wasn't that a concern? Even if we went and.
Because if you, you're, you're not addressing, you're taking away the wrestling room and even with the seating and how far back you'd have to push things, you're pushing stuff close to one hundred and sixteen street. And the way everything is set up, keeping the bare bone of the structure and doing all the stuff around it was pretty expensive.
But going back to the collapsible bleacher design, instead of the fixed bleacher thing they initially had with, uh, building some walls around it and taking out a third of the wrestling room. Going back collapsible bleacher design and the glass overhead doors eliminated any problems with, with, uh, the wrestling room up, up top. Well, scheduling issues, yeah, maybe. But I was talking about moving, I was talking about removing the space altogether. Cause initially the plan was to build cement block around there and put in permanent, permanently installed bleachers versus just accordion bleachers like, you know, expandable bleachers like they have now.
It would still be an issue though.
It could be a scheduling issue, but it wouldn't change the use of the space forever. It'd be on, I mean, how many swim meets could we have a year? You know, it would change it occasionally. So it would change it.
Five or six.
And of those five or six times, I don't know how many times it would overlap with wrestling practice. You see what I mean? It's, it would be a pretty minor impact. I was a wrestler. I'd wanna defend that space too, but, but I mean, it would have a pretty minor conflicting impact versus the original just with bleachers and cement block up there. So, but my, my concern, I mean, I don't know if you're talking about taking a dollar amount out of there altogether or not, but you know, the last, the last time we did a survey on this was the referendum. And the referendum had four point six million for the pool combined with two point three million for high school projects. So six point nine million was a question that failed. And this is one question for seven point eight million on a pool. Um, I, I'm saying if, if you're gonna have a dollar amount on this, it, it needs to be something significantly lower. And I really hope you can find that looking over the, the previous stuff. It was all the work that was done before.
We can look into that. I just don't wanna set us false expectations because, you know, again, these, these dollars are real dollars. We're getting these pools today. We're bidding them. We're just completing, we had a private separate estimate done on this Kivo pool. Exact same thing we're talking about. Those have a factor in it. So, I mean, I'm confident in the numbers we're looking at today. I can't, again, look back to the higher scope. I, I, if it is, if the numbers are equitable, if the scope is not, right, it's not apples.
Well, then I'd like to know. Then I'd like to know the difference, uh, that the, uh, beyond, beyond just two years of inflation, that, uh, that, um, three point five million dollars gets us.
Let me ask a question. So if, if the intent is to get to a pool of a certain size to accommodate spectators of a certain size, it's really location high school versus middle school versus somewhere else, really is where is the most cost-effective solution? Or are there other factors we need to consider? So by adding in, filling in the pool, getting additional space, that's, that again, is not apples to apples again. So I understand the benefit of that, but to get them to be apples to apples, we then need to consider additional scope for that other option.
Right.
We have to put addition on to also the building just so that when folks are reading numbers to.
But in the apples to apples interest, right now, your option three is apples to apples at three point five million dollars more. And I'd just like to know why and if it's possible to get that down. I understand. I'm just asking, Quinn, I'll say again. I'm ask, I'm just asking him to.
You've asked it several times. He's very, very nice and answered it several times. You need to answer it.
I'm just asking him to look at it without coming, without, without coming back and saying it's apples to oranges versus apples to apples, that kind of stuff. I'm just saying, take, is apples to apples with the option three? I'm just asking you to take a look at it. And I'm saying, I would be curious, I don't know about the rest of the board, to know where, where the, why it's three point five million more than like, if they severely.
By the old number.
If they, if, but that's, let him answer. If they severely, just a second. If they would, if they would severely, um, if they severely underestimated something that should be obvious to you, and I'd be interested to know.
So when I suggested that I would get the information to him later this week, you were the first one that said, well, no, we should discuss it now. So all, what you just brought up multiple times could have been solved when I said I would get you the information after this meeting.
I keep being told we act as a board. Right?
You're asking for information that you don't have. I'm offering to get him that information so we can respond to your question.
That's fine. No, you didn't say, I'll get you information later in this week. Look, look, the conversation's going south. And we don't need to do this.
You keep driving it south. I tried to segment it before.
All right.
To say, I'll get you the information.
It's late. I'm leaving. This is getting ridiculous, guys. Come on. This is, this is ridiculous. You said that you would get with him and talk with him later in this week. And I think, and I, that's not what you said. You said you'd get with him and talk with him later in the week. And I thought we should have the discussion as a group.
And we are. But you're asking.
If all you're trying to do is give him information later in the week, that's fine.
I didn't get a chance to do that, John.
Go look at the tape and you'll see what you said. We do things as a group. You said we would discuss it later. We do this as a group.
Could we talk about options one, two, or three? I'm totally confused now. I really like putting in some numbers, getting rid of one or two and sticking with three. And the standalone thing, Kevin, I get your concern there. I think at this point, I guess I would be okay moving ahead without that question because we can't get numbers soon now, right? And we don't even have a spot for it. It hasn't been explored. Is that why you're saying we can't put that in? Is that not what he said?
You gotta figure out what you want.
Right. So it's not been explored at all.
So, well, I think.
Yeah, outside of the committee.
The new pool, we need to debate the cost, but if, if the new pool is the only thing, would you, is the new pool or nothing? Let me know that. Or if you say, no, it's a new pool or we'll fix up what we got. We don't like it, but we will. Tell me that. Or if it's that, those two options, add, fill it in. And we're not gonna swim anymore. Tell me that.
Okay, I can't go along with that. Can we take that off the table? We are not gonna fill it in. What I would like to know is, is there a different cost for the six lane, to refix the six lane?
Option one isn't an option. Option one's going to solve some pool lining, flooding, plumbing things that the water keeps running and things like that. That's not going to address the concern that's stated in the paragraph.
That should be built into number seven in the high school.
Correct. So it's really, it's really, is this a new pool?
Okay, got it. Got it. Okay, I'm with you.
Focusing on was a new pool in the existing, in the existing area or because.
Okay, then if you agree to that, then another recommend is we create a section that looks just like all other schools. We have one image and we say, here's where it would.
Yes.
What it would be, here's a little, I'm like, we do some kind of a little pull up. Here's what it'd look like. And it would cost what it's gonna cost. And we'd ask a prioritization question. Now you could, now here's pretty important. So we can do that. So it's parallel to everything else. The other question is, um, would, and I have an opinion, I'll, I'll, I'm sharing my opinion, but, do you, would, ultimately, would the pool be a second question on the map? This is my question. Cause if you try to put a pool in with any kind of project, it quite often puts the whole project at risk. There are certainly cool supporters and fans. And I can rate the survey either way.
I think the feedback on that one maybe needs to be separate.
Yeah.
So that's why adding option one into question number seven under the high school.
Yeah.
Makes sense. So it would be a functional pool with dedicated access and.
So it's, it's a new pool with an image.
With that, I want it back to what I was saying before and we talked about, and you were throwing it off the table. I want it, so if we have two options there, I want one option, a pool in the existing area that we're talking about here. And the other option would be an auditorium and you could even throw in what you would do with the old pool space. But I, I know you, you obviously have numbers on all that stuff right now and that's fine, but that's really what I want there because they did explore that and the majority of them said, this would be a viable option based off of whatever research they did to. to not even address it and to put it in there and say, this is gonna cost this much, is not gonna make them happy.
So what I would say, I looked at their numbers and they had 7.8 million for a new auditorium, but that did not include any parking lot or roads or, I mean, it literally said, don't get in the middle of the softball field.
Yeah.
Did that include lots?
And, and to Lori's point, I was at the committee meetings too, there was no architect, there, there were just people who were in, just said that. So their pool, a new auditorium they have here is 7.8, but the question becomes, if we can put that as an option.
Yeah.
We're gonna have to, in order to, I mean, it could be another half a million dollars to reconstruct, I mean, what you would have to do for traffic.
Well, it could be millions.
Millions that we could do to that. So we almost, we're throwing a design out here tonight that would literally require, I mean, that could shift your whole traffic, I mean, there's a lot of stuff besides, so their numbers were just giving us a ballpark and it's 6. whatever it was on here.
Yes.
That's their number and 1.3 to do now. So, I mean, they have those numbers and I, I mean, I'm not here to debate it. And I get a brand new pool, you don't have to fix anything because you can go with new system. But it didn't address a location and any potential domino effects of what that might mean for parking. It also didn't address, and the question can't, the logistics of what that does for curriculum and being outside and driving in our high schoolers and middle schoolers and schedule and all of that stuff. That aside, you would have to say, where would you want it? And in order to give Ray some direction to give us even a ballpark dollar amount as a standalone auditorium, there's gotta be some direction in order for them to even, because they have to stand behind the numbers that they're gonna put in the survey.
Yeah, I agree, I just don't.
Where the advisory committee didn't have to stand behind their numbers.
But what do we, but what do we say to them is my question? What do we say when we get the people to come back and say this, that, and the other thing? And they come, I mean, I don't like it not being addressed at all.
There's no feasible option.
Well, we're basing it off of these other things. There's a lot of factors we haven't addressed. It could be a feasible option. We haven't gotten into the details of it. She's saying what they didn't address in their thing. It still could be a feasible option. If this is seven point, if what we're planning on doing based off what's on here is 7.8, the other one's 7.8 and we find out it's maybe a million more to do a whole separate thing and fix the other stuff, it could be a viable option for a million dollars more to have your own separate thing.
But how do we transport people in the middle of winter?
In the middle of winter, people go outside all the time. You gotta park the car, transport people, you walk across the street.
You walk across the street from over there, just after you get out of the pool.
There's locker rooms and other things that change.
Why you have a secret?
The idea is that then it's more public access and availability and it gets its own space.
How does the usability from high school or this stuff?
Usability of the high school? Not necessarily.
Well, kids have to go outside after they get done swimming in the winter time, that reduces the usability. It increases the.
But we're talking about a high school swimming classes versus the swim team and all the other events that they're meant for. It expands the ability of it to be used for other things in the overall communities, the events that are held at it, the club events, the other things that can happen to it, it expands the possibilities.
This from my experience, if you do that, it will reduce the support for it. People don't.
I understand that. I'm not saying that's what we should do, but I'm saying putting two options out there and addressing the issue makes, makes sense.
Then we just have to pause and probably wait until a few months to get all the numbers.
Is it feasible to arrange? Could you get used to a pool in outer range? And so, just from a direction standpoint, identifying the location, getting data on utility extensions to that, drives, parking, if we're putting it on top of the softball field, they assume we need to replace the softball field somewhere, or we need to get it to a practice field. Filling in the pool we have and redoing that space with new systems and so, again, a million is lights because it's, I mean, it, again, it's not gonna, it's not comparable options. Our goal is to say, do you like this or do you like this? They're not, they're not comparable. I mean, costs are showing.
Well, I know the costs are gonna show that, but the idea is that this has been addressed before. Why, I guess we didn't look into it at all when it was brought to our attention. We're only like, this, where did the 7.8 come from that we had, that you have in there?
But I think as all this evolves, we're reassessing, right? The previous referendum also proposed a brand new, those corners. We're not proposing that in this scenario.
Previous referendum proposed that auditorium at all, but I'm saying, where, I guess, where did the 7.8 come? Is that just comparable to what Mestigo is essentially planning?
We built a new space program where we believe this would be, we assume we'd be able to reuse of the existing buildings in terms of square footage, which is locker rooms and cannabis, which is important.
Yeah.
The existing, the additional square footage gets you a code required deck clearance from all, you update all the existing locker rooms, gets you to the spectator and team seating targets that we established based on just previous projects. We worked with Water Technologies Inc., which is one of the specialty pool contractors. They supported us in building a budget for you in previous projects. And so, all of that done based on lots of assumptions, right? Because we haven't sat down and designed a little group. So yes, we did reference some recently bid projects and recently cost estimated projects just as a gut check comparison. So I, again, this is very conceptual, but we're confident in the number based on the solution as an addition advice.
I think I'd be comfortable. I'm, I'm really sensitive too to what the committee recommended in keeping them on board with this referendum. I'm, I've been behind that all along, but the question Kevin asks is what could we say to them? And I think, I think the fact that this is a whole new pool, which is not just a renovation, I think, I think that they would be okay with that because it is, it isn't a standalone, but it is still a completely new facility compared to what we were looking at before. So I think that, that, I guess in my mind, I would be comfortable going back to the committee saying, we did discuss it, we did look into it, we didn't price it all out, but at this point we decided curriculum-wise it wasn't the smartest thing.
Sorry, if you two go, we can speak to this maybe more, but the whole approach to the surveys, how district-wide needs to be identified and.
Right.
Figure out what the highest priority is today, not just what's in the first question, but now what happens as second, third generation solutions come forward and are those capital projects, are those future referendums, what are those? But this hopefully will give us the data to say, okay, this is what we think, again, we've all talked about kind of the crosshairs of tax tolerance and highest priorities, what that potential referendum is. And then after that, there's gonna be lots of other things, right, that don't fall into that. We'll also have data on what are the highest priorities amidst those, which will also tell us if, not just do we think the pool is portable today, but where does it rank compared to the rest of the needs in the district as well? Which I think is the one thing we didn't get out of prior efforts.
But Kevin, Kevin knows the swimmers. He knows this, he knows that population. And if you really think they're gonna vote it down because it's not a standalone, then we should take a look at that.
Saying they're gonna vote it down, I'm saying that you're gonna piss off the people that came to us that said, we thought this was better, we did this, 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 and this, without giving them hard facts of, well, you gave us this number, this tells us this. This is the total number, that is substantially greater than what you put on here, and it makes more sense to go this way. Without giving them that information, we run the risk of them coming back just and saying they didn't listen or we didn't listen.
Plus the notations of how it negatively, could negatively impact our high school PE program, but the middle school PE program with changing the space, the softball space out there and that kind of stuff. I mean, it has negative impacts kind of throughout the district doing that. I don't know if that was addressed with that idea. I certainly respect what you're saying about, you know, they came up with this idea and then if we don't even address that idea somehow and just flush it right away, I think we need to address that idea somehow that we, that we considered it. But, but, I mean, it does sound like that the, the cost would skyrocket and the, the negative impacts throughout the district would keep rolling, so.
And I'm not, I'm personally not willing to delay the project at this point. I think we can address the concern through communication. Delay this whole thing to get more numbers.
So maybe the question, if you don't tie down, determine if the community would be in favor of, willing to separate any children from the building. We're not saying it's actually a good idea. If there's enough response to say, yeah, if you use an auditorium, do a separate survey inside, determine the cost of that, keep moving forward with the rest of the project. But address that as a potential base to your policy. So the answer then becomes, there was enough district feedback to say, hey, we're interested, we're interested in the future, to run and test that number, if there's not enough, you say, hey, we've tried, it's not as building important.
I think, I think you're on the road. I think there's something to be done there. I think what we can do is say, basic logic is, we do support additional room. And I think we do need to give some cost to that. We need a yes or no.
But if we're saying that's gonna hold a little process.
No, I did.
Jackie.
Thank you. Wouldn't it be possible to do a quick meeting with the original group and kind of explain, here's where we're going with the current process, here's what the survey's going to include? It might give a chance to get more information from them about where their numbers came from and have them understand where your numbers are coming from and just have them, they get the information first because they were part of that process before?
Yeah, and I think that that's what, what I've been hearing is that there's that communication piece and we can't, and I think that that's part of it. I mean, they're understanding that we're not devaluing what they did, but at this point in time, the feasibility, again, they, they did, they went a lot beyond what was asked of them and what they did, but, but to be able to equate that to the level of, you know, to this complete facility stuff, they're just not apples to apples.
But I just, I, the, the main concern is I don't want them to say, well, we did this.
Sure.
And you're just saying, well, no, that doesn't make any sense, we can't do it, without proving to them and saying, okay, you put 4.6, that's great, you need to factor in a million here, a million there, and this, and this, and this, and then that adds up. So it's really not a viable option instead of just saying, yeah, it's gonna be too expensive.
All right, so what if we say, we ask, would you support a referendum to provide funding to build a new pool? An estimated cost range maybe? Okay, and then if yes, what location would you support? Please select all locations you would. You know, current location, you know, you could select more than one to see, to see is there leaning to one or the other. The problem there is, you put in, you know, the pros and cons of each, when you get in, well, that's not really a con, that's really a pro, that sort of thing. You could do something, we're in plant, we're strictly in the planning phase right now, which location. And then, I think you'd have the data that, and then we could also ask the prioritization question.
But I think if you asked one question to encompass a, a range of prices, I think the top end of that range is gonna make people say no to the question altogether. I think if you're saying, would you, would you support building a new pool, you know, to the estimated cost of five to 12 million dollars or something like that, I think people will see a 12 million and they'll go, no, because they don't wanna risk saying yes to something that would potentially go that high. You know what I mean? I don't, I just think that. Yes, but I think the upper end for a particular way of doing the project would taint the, the lower end of.
So we could just test a new, we'll assume the new pool adjacent. I guess we got a suggestion in the back. We could go to the group and say, can we take the relocation off the table?
Yeah.
They say that's fine, then we just ask.
Can we do that? What he just said, repeat that.
Well, if we can, we can go to the group, explain we've got two options, we believe one would be of these negative consequences and it'd be too expensive. Are you okay with that? If we get that permission, it would address your concern. Then we could just.
Not worry about that.
Which would address John's concern.
Right.
Got a plan?
That's a plan.
I'd go for that. Anybody else?
Cause I didn't.
I just, I wanna, yeah, I think, you know, I've worked with that group too. I know those meetings were like boring ones. I don't, I think in hindsight, they also look at their process and didn't fully enter, you know, like they said, there wasn't a strategic plan, there wasn't learning. So honestly, I don't know if they're married. So I think giving them the first year, bringing them in now is absolutely symbolic at this point.
That's great.
I mean, in terms of that, that part of it, I just wanna be careful that, so I, I think that that's fine, bringing them in and then going to just one question. But I think if you're gonna ask anything, you have to put some dollars on it because you're throwing out dollars that are almost double each other here. Like, we're at, some are four and eight and they're like, if you're gonna ask a pool question, it's really about the dollars at the end of the day. People are gonna wanna know that. And then, if we move forward and that's part of this space, then is that a location we think it is?
Yeah.
There's no, I mean, we would have to really rethink so many things if we relocated a pool outside of an adjacent building. We already are dealing with traffic problems and whatever, add that on top of after-school parking rep, swim lessons and everything else. So that would literally delay this referendum for at least another year if we were to look at a different location. So I think if it gives us some guidance that there's some community interest in it, then we continue to pursue it. Because that's the ultimate question we wanna get from them. If we ask them so many questions to build down our pool, we don't even know where the level of interest is. We've gone off a tangent that we don't, we don't, if there's interest, then let's great. Then let's really vet that through and spend our time there, but don't give them too much to begin with. It just makes it too confusing.
Then why wouldn't we just ask if the community is in favor of a standalone auditorium or building a new pool?
I don't think they're comparable.
If you have a number of dollars.
And we can get a dollar amount for that.
I'm in. Stand more budget. I get it, but if you don't have a dollar amount, if, if more people come back and say, no, we're not interested in a standalone pool, then you have your answer.
But I think the dollar.
But it would, it would have cost.
You told me it's a million dollars, sure, do it, I mean, and you'd have to provide a narrative that talks about what it does to our curri- and there's, there's a lot of stuff you'd have to provide off the bat.
Jonathan, you had hesitation about talking to the, you sounded like you had hesitation about talking to the committee? Sorry about her talking to the committee or something? I just wanted to know why. Oh, I thought you did. Okay, I thought, sorry.
It strikes me that group would love that.
Yep.
If you explain the logic, I, I guess I don't know, but, and I think it's respectful to say all the time. If they say, no way, it's a legitimate, then we're, maybe we have to sit down.
Yeah, we're trying to expect them to not want to respond. Because right now, we can't do that.
Do you guys send an email?
I will, tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
So respectful and email during the meeting.
So, um, so there's, I don't know, I'm not even sure that usually when I ask a question, I know my answer, but I don't know my answer. So, so we've got master plan, we're trying to identify priorities, and we're gonna ask the funding support question. By the way, we haven't talked about that question yet. And so we, we ask, we establish a tax tolerance for what I'm calling the, I don't know what I'm calling that, the, everything but the pool. And, and then you could say, in addition to the academic plan or the, the projects, we also have this pool issue. We can set it up as a stand, you know, it's got a stand on its own, it's gonna be asked on its own, that's one approach. The other way to do it is to, like people wanted, was maybe a swing pool, a head of funding support. And that, that, that's the all-in. But that infers that it would be all in one question, not two. So I guess if you're thinking, yeah, it's gonna be two questions involved, then it should be a second que- I can design it that way, I just have to.
Can you tell us the research on one versus two questions and what happens?
Okay, if you, pools are killers, okay?
We were gonna say that.
Twenty-six projects that went to referendum pre-sale, two were associated with pools, right? And.
So you say there's a chance.
There's a chance. Well, but they're really hard and there's, there's, it's a, it's called a bi-modal distribution. There's people who love pools and there's people that say, we got a pond, we don't need a pool. And, and there's not a normal distribution, there's not a middle of the road. In your case, you've identified, how does a 44.5 include the pool? So we're in north of $50 million in witness, of identified potential projects. So if you ride the pool horse too hard, what that infers is that's more important than some of these $44 million that it needs. So we need to be careful with that message, okay? So, what I'd recommend is you say, you know what, it's important and we love our pool and we're gonna let it, excuse it, pond sinker swim on its own. And it's gonna, it's gonna be its own question. And, and then let the community decide. But where a lot of districts have challenges when you try to include it, try to, try to repackage and include it. If it was, if you didn't have $44 million worth of other needs, then I might have a different strategy. But it's, it's hard to argue is water important and a lot of those projects, maybe not all those projects, but a lot of those projects. So, so then I think it has a chance actually, and, and then you have to get out and you have to get after it. There are cases where it's stand on its own.
But I mean, frankly, I mean, we've been talking about it the whole time. I don't see how it has a chance at all really, when I'm looking at this whole thing. I don't see how it has a chance at all, really, when I'm looking at this whole thing. I mean, with the funding support thing, for, just as a separate question, should there be an additional one that says, it's twelve, eighteen, twenty-four, thirty, forty-four and a half or something?
Well, that's the question to the board, is how high do you wanna go?
But, I mean, with all, the thought is going and the millions of things that are on here that could be considered a need for all these schools, I don't even see how it's gonna even come close to passing at all. You, you put up a pool against, you need to fix all these other structures and all these other things, and nobody's gonna vote for a pool.
But we haven't decided what other things yet, Kevin. So, you're not even asked the question?
I'm gonna throw that out there now, because that's.
I wouldn't.
That's what I'm trying to understand.
I think the pool's gotta be on there. I mean, a lot of people have spent a lot of time, so it should be on there.
But when, I mean, you're talking about all these ones that you've done, when have you seen one pass? And how did it pass? Give me some insight into that, because right now I'm looking at forty-four million dollars of other things that people are gonna say, well, absolutely, why would we even consider doing a pool when there's these, all of these other things that we should be doing?
Well, if you, if you have, have that in your backyard, like your own, it's the ability to.
Some quarry was a second question, voted failed the first time, and then came back the following election cycle and passed it as a separate standalone question by itself. But that was a separate.
Yeah, those are big Dean County schools.
Mestigo, the, went to survey the community, similar structure to this, isolated it, community came back and said they would not support it by a referendum, but they did think it was a need. And the district has been working on alternative funding sources outside of the referendum.
And what about Greenfield? Didn't they pass a referendum? Didn't Greenfield pass a referendum and the swim team worked really hard to get that through? Yeah, that's a, not that long ago, how many years ago?
Was that long ago? I thought they built their new pool much more.
It opened in two thousand nine, two thousand ten.
Okay, but they were, was it a separate question?
It was part of their whole school, if I'm not mistaken. Was it that? I think it was part of their, and it wasn't a new school, it was renovations to their school, because they kept a portion of their old school to make it not a new school.
Right. But they also didn't have forty-four million dollars. I mean, they were a school in relative good shape. So, that's the other way you get to it, is kind of the last thing remaining.
I don't know about that, but they didn't have it out there anyway.
So, what I'm hearing is it needs to be on the survey, or not. See if we can take it off.
Leave it on, separate question.
Sure. Leave it on, separate question, or a new pool. And we're gonna be with the group just to ensure that. Okay, let's talk about funding support, because this is the most important question in the survey that we haven't talked about yet. So, voters who need a referendum for major renovations, so the upgrades, so now we've identified forty-four point five million, and we're going to be developed for the first phase. And really, the question to the board is how low do you wanna go and how high do you wanna go? So, I did get numbers compared for the twelve, eighteen, twenty-four, and thirty. I always with Lisa Boyson today at another meeting, and she said, there might be a change, she said, let me know. But we're also coming up, what was the total of the failed referendum, like eighteen?
Twenty, in total with both of them, I thought it was in the twenty-seven?
Okay.
Something like that. So, I think, if you think about it that way, then thirty makes sense.
That's why I wanna go, that's how I picked it, was, do you wanna go higher, do you wanna go lower?
Well, the, the low might be too low. Gales Corners, yeah, I mean, if Gales Corners is, is a need and it's a comprehensive project, you may want to start at sixteen. Because if the twenty-three less than sixteen, with all of Gales Corners as a comprehensive project is all figured out.
Or do you insert a seventeen?
Sure. Why don't you just do the eighteen that you've got and raise it up to thirty-six?
Because I thought that the, that the groups had eleven million, didn't they have a?
Just based on the property, it wasn't necessarily dollars and what the tax bill was.
Right.
And so, now that's totally, I mean, that's three years ago.
I know.
But our impact on tax rate is totally different. So, we tolerated at that point a dollar increase, where they said was a threshold in terms of the tax rate, in the middle rate, right? Yeah, with a dollar increase on the middle rate. But that's, well, they're based on the numbers that that tempted dollars, and you're thinking we're backwards, do you think how much money that was?
What about, this isn't an auction, but what about fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, thirty?
I hate to just pick numbers, I'd rather it be based on what makes sense to the projects we could get done.
Well, I think, I think fifteen would get you bearing close to a whole HCE project. You might, you might have to turn back, or you might have to go some one forty-one, forty-two thousand percent.
I'll get a hundred bucks from Fund Forty-Six right now.
I don't disagree, because by the time we look at existing infrastructure and what maybe comes out of future capital projects.
Well, wouldn't you agree that most people would go for the lesser cost option?
Right.
So, why would you give them a lesser option, just cost option, if they really don't agree with it?
Right, or give us enough options.
Eighteen and, yeah, twenty-four and, give them three options, eighteen, twenty-four, thirty, I don't know.
Because there is an option on here to check, and I'd support a smaller one, but I mean, there is an option for the people to check that.
Doesn't it make sense to do just, just twenty-five? Does it make sense to do forty-four now?
No.
No, I think you have enough people. Then you, then you get the, you know, what are you smoking, pounds? But I think if you wanna kind of put out something pretty reasonable, it really is a low, is a question, how low do you wanna go?
I would start. Because they can check, I would only support a smaller.
Because if they would say that they will support the eighteen million, doesn't mean that we're just gonna do another quarter of all that.
Well, no, then we reassess the scope of the overall price.
Right, so if we started at twelve, then we could give people a difference, or, you know, whatever, I don't know.
I like the.
But if we're giving them a smaller amount, are we really gonna do one of the ten?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Or lower?
We could.
We could do fifteen?
I, I like the way you have it. I think it brackets the, the HCE project nicely and gives us an idea of, if people wanna infer that that eighteen is for HCE, then, and they think that's what we need, then they'll probably vote for that, I don't know.
I, I think people are, are kinda like, they do the math, you have the HCE, right, how do we? Yeah. I feel like if you don't give them the twelve, you're kinda like, well, how much of a raise are we gonna give the superintendent, twenty, twenty-five, or thirty percent?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, I'm good with whatever. Do you wanna go?
I like the way it is.
That makes sense, the way Nancy raised it, where you kinda.
Yeah, I think so too, because last time, remember the options were, we didn't put all four buildings out there as a menu, there was sort of just like three things. And so, I get last time, well, you wouldn't wanna start less than you're voting. Then, here, there are, there are parts where I think you, it might be that the entire HCE probably go out there, but, well, as I say, we're giving them time to get low that, or, you know, first phase, second phase.
So, we're good with twelve, eighteen, twenty-four, or?
I can live with it.
If you really, if, how can you, how can you do a piece of HCE? Maybe you can, without doing the whole project, are you watching?
That's why we ask those questions.
Addressing the first phase, because this is the high priority.
Maybe you'll get the demo, but maybe you'll just do the existing infrastructure.
It might cost, it'll cost more. It would cost more, but if that's what they want.
Well, we're, then we're just doing what we did.
Right.
Previous to the, as we updated, we got, now we got a seven layer on, so, again, that'll be, they show up.
I think why we took this strategy of breaking one and prioritizing smaller pieces, that way we have true data and we can reconstruct what we think is the most supportable solution based on priorities and dollar values. Hopefully, we'll be in that position.
I did like the fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, thirty, because that's.
Yeah, I like that, that's what I wrote down, because I, I feel like fifteen would get me closer to HCE.
Yeah, and that just kinda makes up.
I like to do this.
I don't care.
Okay, we got more.
I'm not married.
Fifteen, twenty-five, and thirty?
I could support that too.
Yeah, sure. The other thing I like about that is I'm guessing the fifteen's gonna end up below fifty, so, well, if you get twenty, so I think that's relatively minimal. And then I said three million dollars.
Yeah, the only downside is if that group set eleven, they're gonna be unhappy, even though I know everything's changed. Just remember, some people have that number in their head, now we're up to fifteen.
You can talk to them about that too.
Yeah, right, I mean, I think.
Yeah.
That piece of it in the variables, like we talked about together, it's all relative in terms.
Yeah, these, it's a lot, these middle rate impacts are a lot smaller than the, so I'll be acting.
That's wonderful. Oh, good news.
Okay. Do you have the information that I need?
Thank you.
Thanks very much for your work.
Thank you.
All right, now we'll go to five C administrative reports, Jackie.
We forgot Jackie, we forgot Jackie.
Can she come up here for that?
Does anybody have any questions at this wonderful hour about summer school?
Can she come up here for that?
I'd love to come up there.
Can she come up here for that?
I got a migraine, so if I look really funny, it's just my head's gonna explode.
Any questions about it?
No.
We ran it for ten days, which was different than we have in the past, because we were running for three weeks, Monday through Thursday. This year it was Monday through Friday, as due when, uh, the Fourth of July. Like, it was relatively popular, but last season, I go, is this the one?
Thank you.
Thanks for coming up.
Okay, I have some questions. Say, what is the seven, that's a case?
Oh, that looks good.
I have a quick one. Um, Freefield High School, or Freefield School District, I should say, um, they have some of their own medical, um, kind of like clinic, but they do have a, yeah, and they are having an open house. Do you know what that, what that is? I forgot to send this down. Yeah, this is, um, I can follow it though. So, it might be interesting if you wanted to go and see their, like, because their whole is to, we just help their cost, and it'll be open to their staff and families. So, I mean, that is something that we had talked about when we chose our insurance representative as well.
Do you know what, do you know what level of professional staff buy?
It's, uh, I think it's a.
NP.
Yeah, I think it's, yeah, I think it is. And they're only there, you know, not too many hours a week, but, you know, scheduled time.
Sure.
You just may wanna announce we're having that board workshop, is that next week? The board, not the board meeting next week, on the eighteenth?
See available now? Got Greenfield, I believe? Yeah, tomorrow against Greenfield. Surely.
Okay, and I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Second?
Second.
I'm in favor.
Aye.